Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting for Tuesday, February 26, 2013. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Flag. The United States of America, we are the republic of which stands foundation for God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In accordance with mass general law, I have to announce that this meeting is being taped by the Board of Selectment and also recorded by East Long Meadow Cable Access. And I have to ask if anyone else in the audience is recording this meeting. Angela? Okay. All right, let's begin. Our six o'clock appointment is our -- excuse me, Tom Clerk, Tom Florence. Come on up, Tom.
I'm shaking hands today.
I'm not shaking anybody's hand today, by the way. Don't take it personally. How are you, sir?
Good, how about you?
Good.
Good.
Hey, Jim.
Okay, we've got a few items. The first one has to do with the upcoming elections.
Yes. Yep, the, um, what are consultant camp and town council up with us?
I believe the issue with the election is the Board Select needs to make a determination tonight.
Right.
Whether or not to move the annual election to coincide with the primary for the vacant senate seat in the state. Along with that, we've had some, a couple of issues come up. One raised by one of the candidates over the ballot language, but staying with the question of the election date. In reviewing the special act which was adopted in East Long Meadow about 20 years ago for preliminary elections, there's a provision in the statute which requires that the preliminary election be held 28 days before the election. So that if you were to determine tonight to move the annual election to the end of April, then you would also be, have to move or be moving the date for the preliminary election back.
To be April 2nd, which will be 28 days before.
From that date. Just a point that I don't know that had been discussed or brought up before because we were only dealt with it.
It hasn't. All we knew was that, you know, that we had the latitude from the government, based on what the governor had said, to move the election, you know.
What is the actual time difference?
It would be from March 12th to April 2nd, which is three weeks.
Okay.
Twenty-one days.
So 21 days, so we're actually looking at 49 days. And just as a note, I know he didn't say anything, but Selectman Ponderson left in light of the fact that he's part of the upcoming election. He deemed it necessary to not take part in this conversation, so I figured I'd say that for him, just so people didn't think he just got up and left. All right, well, that sort of, I guess, puts a damper on my thoughts because I had a bunch of questions regarding what you had sent, Tom.
Okay.
Like, you know, I didn't, I guess I didn't understand why there was so much more cost to combining them.
Yeah.
Because I figured the people would be there for the same amount of time and whatnot, so. But I'm sure, I'm not sure, but I don't know if we want to extend the date for the preliminary election, you know, into April. I don't know if there's any, if you have any thoughts on that.
Well, so the total net savings in combining them is $2,600.
Approximately. It's not a great amount.
Right.
I mean, to do it the way we have to do it, we have to have a lot more election workers. Because you're going to have, you know, two sets of voters lists, one for the primary, one for the annual election, so you can get additional people to handle one for each election. In a primary, it's a little more involved, too, because you're a Republican, Democrat, and then if you're unenrolled, the state wants to, you know, make sure they know who grabs which ballot, so it's, you know.
What's your preference and why?
My preference? I think for accuracy, and I think for, in the light of, you know, situations that may have gone on in the past, I think on a conservative approach, in lieu of saving the $2,600, I think to keep the election separate. Because this way, we won't have to look for additional election workers, have additional training meetings, you know. And then three-week period from April 9th to April 30th should be plenty of time for us to set up for the April 30th election. I know the two big factors are voter convenience and maybe a chance for a better voter turnout in addition to the 2,000's amount savings. But I think because of the additional work that's got to go into training the workers, to programming the cards, to, I mean, it can be done, but, you know, to take a conservative approach. If it was a general election, if it was, you know, the June 25th one when there wasn't primaries involved, it might be a little bit easier for all the workers involved. But, you know, my take right now would be to keep them separate.
Have we ever had a primary where we had one of our preliminary elections at the same time, say in the fall?
Not that I can remember. And I checked all the elections back from 1986 today, and we have not ever combined elections. It would benefit other towns that have more precincts, because the majority of savings are toward police officers. If you have five or six precincts, you can save officers in every one of those precincts. We only have one precinct, so the savings for us anyway wouldn't be as great. For other towns, we'd be more attractive.
And I'll be, $2,600 question, you had said that we basically could save, we'd only be saving $2,600, but you also noted that there's a chance that the state may
Right.
reimburse funds because of the primary election.
Right, of the primary.
You don't have a sense of how much that would be, do you?
Historically, it's been between $1,500 and $2,000. They don't let you know until, you know, closer to the primary date, but they have given something. So they will, no, no matter if we combine them or not, we're still going to get whatever the state auditor's office gives.
Well, I'm just thinking, if it's costing us the net $2,600 to have two elections, and we were getting back $2,000, and it's only costing us $600, so it's not as bad a hit as it could be, so.
Right, exactly. Yeah.
Okay.
I tend to trust the intuition and thoughts of our clerk.
Okay.
And, you know, as a very recent candidate, I might also say that it's probably those extra three weeks for all concerned probably are appreciated. Not that we would make that our reasoning behind the decision, but certainly it gives our candidates more opportunity to speak with the township and talk about why they should or shouldn't be in this seat, so perhaps you look at that as a benefit as well.
Yeah.
Okay, and also in light of the fact that, you know, going through the math, it's probably going to be a, if we get $1,500, it'll be a, what, $1,100 difference, so it's not, it's not a tremendous saving. It's not the $6,000 that I had originally thought, so.
No, no, it's of all the additional, you know, again, different precincts, you could save, you know, a lot more money, but, you know, I do agree, and it's, it is a difficult decision because it would be more convenient for the voters, and it possibly could be a better voter turnout, those are some of the advantages, however.
Could be more confusion, too.
It could be more confusion, too. Again, being a primary election.
All right.
Yeah.
In that case, is there a motion to, I guess, to keep the preliminary and regular election day as the same as scheduled?
I'll make the motion.
A second out of necessity. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Thank you, Paul, appreciate it. Should we bring out the other question?
If you want to talk about it now or not.
For communication or shipping or?
I guess, one of the other issues before we talk, the rest of the clerk's agenda, there's been a question raised, apparently with respect to the wording of the preliminary election ballot for the vote for selectmen. And the issue, or the question seems to be, in the past, historically, town clerk, current town clerk and his predecessors have worded the ballot question, either vote for no more than two of the candidates, where you have more than two candidates running in the runoff. And there's been an issue raised saying that that question should read, "Vote for one." I've reviewed the special act under which we have preliminary elections. I've also been informed by the town clerk that in where you're taking out your nomination papers in the first instance to run for office, including the Board of Selectmen, that a voter is allowed to sign any number of nomination papers. So that if the three of you were running for selectmen and I were a resident of East Long Meadow and a voter, I could sign each of your nomination papers, and that would be perfectly acceptable. So with that understanding of how the nomination process exists, reading the special act that allows preliminary elections in East Long Meadow, the language of that act says that the two persons receiving at a preliminary election, the highest number of votes for nomination for the office shall be the sole candidates for office in the election. So the special act is viewing the preliminary runoff as the final nomination process for the candidates who are going to be running for selectmen. So for consistency, it's my opinion that it is proper to, or permissible, to allow citizens to vote for one or two of the candidates running in the preliminary election and not restrict them to being able to only vote for one. So that, I informed the clerk of that, that that's my opinion. He's asked me for my opinion, I've given him that that's my opinion. And more importantly, I think than that, that historically, that's the way East Long Meadow has done it. And just to change the process, just because someone says, "I think it should be done a different way," is not an appropriate thing to do.
So you keep, so we keep it at vote for no more than two candidates?
Vote for not more than two.
As opposed to vote for at least one, but no more than two?
Well, it's something of that, no more than two. And the only reason it's being brought before the board, it's not an issue for you to decide or have any interpretation of, but it's been an issue that's been in play publicly, and since this meeting was televised to the citizenry, it made sense to try to address that issue now so that people would understand the reasoning behind why the question or the change was not going to be enacted.
Yep. And the thing is, and thank you very much, it's a great explanation, is, you know, you can still vote for one if you want.
Right.
And you can vote for up to two. So it's really up to, maybe the candidates are up to us just to get that message out, too. You know, you don't have to vote for two, you can vote for one or two.
Does it say vote for two or vote for up to two?
Vote for not more than two.
Not more than two, okay.
Right.
And ultimately, ultimately, the idea is to whittle it down to two candidates anyway, so.
That's correct.
Which is the logic for me, is that you want to choose your two finalists, which would make me want to choose two people of however many, so that makes sense to me.
I like that point.
So then I'm out of your agenda.
So basically, before you leave, we're keeping it the way it is based on your esteemed judgment, and that we shouldn't change it, and there's no reason to change it.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item is staff recognition?
Yeah, I am, I'm going to bring up, again, based on some events that happened last year, and to get to where we are now, it was very important to me, very important for our office to renew voter confidence to, you know, and I think we've, you know, time, you know, heals everything, but, you know, the assistant town clerk just did a tremendous job. She did work a lot of extra hours, she sent out a lot of paperwork, and, you know, we worked together to, you know, make everybody's party right again, and, you know, I just, you know, haven't had a chance with so much going on, I just, you know, some kind of recognition, and I, you know, I don't know if it's something, you know, we can discuss, you know, monetarily, or just, you know, a nice, you know, plaque-ish, or something like that, just a recognizer for the job that she's, I just don't want it to go unnoticed.
Right.
I can thank her all I want, but it's, you know, it's something coming from the board to me.
It's very nice.
Okay.
And then you've got budget and staffing requests?
Yes. Yeah, the only question, you know, I gave you some supporting documents on still the justification of the part-time person. And again, what would happen last year, we were in the process of looking at, you know, that part-time person, and we've actually been short, again, the justification explains, for probably two, two-and-a-half years now, to get that person to answer phones, to wait on the counter. And when some, somebody's out, we're one and a half people short, you know, sometimes two and a half people. And it's the same thing, I have had discussions with appropriations committee, and they do have their recommendation that, you know, they agree with me, but again, it's just a budgetary issue. But I just, again, I come before you tonight just to let you know the importance and how critical it is to get that person, because, you know, the morale, it's, I mean, it just gets hectic, there's a lot, it's like a central place there, and that half person would go a long way to really, to really help out.
You know, obviously, we're in the position of trying to keep every department whole, but also trying to keep under fiscal restraints and, you know.
Exactly, yeah.
If we had an unlimited pocketbook, it'd be great, but we don't, so.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
But we'll definitely take a look at this and, you know, advise you as to what we possibly can and what we can't do, so. Mary?
There has to be some no somewhere along the way, this isn't one of them.
What's that?
I said there has to be some no somewhere along the way.
Yeah, yeah.
You must be able to serve the public correctly, too.
Right. You know, I think that what I did give you is handouts, I mean, there's a lot there, and there's a lot.
You did a very thorough job.
Yeah.
Covered everything.
Yeah, hopefully it'll happen, so.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Next, we have our distinguished fire chief.
Good evening.
Now Doug's sitting there wondering when I'm going to call him.
How are you? You guys are too far away to shake hands.
I know, I got a cold anyways, you know, shake hands.
It's all right.
Chief, how you doing?
Good, good.
All right. We are here for a few items, the first of which is modifications of the department rules and regs, which we briefly spoke about last week.
Right.
If you want to give us a.
A brief.
Yeah, update.
Currently, the department operates with two sets of rules, guidelines, policies, procedures. One is called the Department Rules and Regulations, that's been around for an extremely long time. Some of the, some of the rules in there are a bit antiquated and have been changed throughout time, and it's, those are signed off on by the board members directly. In the past, the chiefs have made recommendations, present them to the board, the board approves them or doesn't approve them, they sign off on it, and they re-modify the department rules and regulations. In the early to late, I mean, the middle to late 1990s, standard operating procedures or guidelines have come into play for fire departments. Any standards based agency, and for the fire departments, the National Fire Protection Association, who kind of governs, doesn't mandate, but suggests how a fire department should operate, and it's always been prudent to try and follow that as best you can. And one of the things, one of their top things is departments need to have standard operating procedures and guidelines. There's a big question about what you actually call them. Procedures are more set in stone. I sent an officer out for a call, and he doesn't follow that procedure to the letter, and something happens, he could be liable. As opposed to if it's a guideline, and he uses his training, his experience, and knowledge, all of that, and he varies from that slightly, and everything goes okay, or something does happen, he's covered. So years ago, when Bob Wallace started making the guidelines, he called them guidelines. And it seems to work today. Most of the departments around that I've talked to that have them are still using them as guidelines. My concern is, going through it, it's always been a question about the chain of command within the department. So I modified our standard operating guidelines. I sent along with it a copy of the new chain of command, and, but it kind of countered, contradicted what is said in the rules and regulations.
You're smiling.
No, I'm paying attention.
Okay, the rules and regulations say, "The next senior firefighter shall assume in the absence of any officer." And that goes, whether it's the incident commander or whole incident, or he's going to be the officer of the truck rolling out the door. My concern, and it's the general concern of most of the guys on the department, is there's guys on the department that are senior, but don't have the same experience level, knowledge, training, attendance, but they could be riding in the front seat of the truck, or they could be incident commander at an incident because of this rule and regulation. So what I did is I put the chain of command out there that keeps it almost exactly the same, but in the absence of an officer, in the absence of chief, deputy chief, captain, lieutenant, before it hits the next senior guy, it would be a permanent firefighter. And my, my theory is, and if you read the, one of the purposes of the chain of command SOG is, it's to try and make sure that the department's highest rank, most experienced, and most trained is in command of an incident or an engine company. So that's, that's kind of where I'm feeling at. I want to make sure that we put out our best train. Our full-timers, our permanent firefighters, they're not only academy trained, but they continue to go back and forth to the academy, trained regularly during the daytime. They know the town, they know what's going on. The time they put in is huge. You know, I introduced this at a drill last week, and guys were, you know, it makes a lot of sense, so.
Not just to have somebody that is, it's their rank, have somebody leading that's rank and experienced.
Right.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, is there any problem with having guidelines that, that counteract or contradict rules and regulations?
That's why I'm asking, recommending, or requesting the board modify that rules and regulations.
Okay.
That was my question, that was my initial request. One more thing with the SOG is, we used to have a binder that was about two inches thick, and every time something got changed, or something got posted on the board, we'd put a new piece of paper in the binder. Everybody had one. With the help of IT, we're now on the website, and it's an intranet, so the firefighters log in, they can see the changes. Whenever I do anything, I email them, everybody, let them know that something's up, and they can go online. It's really a convenient, our calendar's in there, so it's beneficial for us.
Great.
Makes sense to me.
Is there any other questions on the board? So Nick, would we make a motion to amend the standard operating guideline for the changes that the chief wants to put into place?
We would, are we recommending to change the rules and regulations based on?
Yes.
Yes.
Article seven.
Yes.
Article seven, yeah.
Section two and section three.
Right.
Okay, is there a motion to?
So moved.
I got to finish it first. To make the changes to the department's rules and regulations to reflect the changes that the chief would like to have as far as seniority and experience regarding the firefighters that answer a call.
Regarding Article seven, section two, and Article seven, section three, yes, I'd make the motion, so moved.
Is there any discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Next, you're applying for the National Fire Academy.
Right.
Training program?
Training, it's a national, the executive fire officer, or training, fire officer training program, right? It's a competitive application, I meet the qualifications of the first round, but one of the things I need to submit with my application is a letter from the board recommending me, and also agreeing that it's going to be a time-consuming project. By time-consuming, I mean it's two weeks a year at the National Fire Academy consecutive, so it's a two-week period that I'll be out of town. One of the advantages is any program that any of the firefighters take at the National Fire Academy are expense paid currently by FEMA. Who knows what's going to happen next week? But currently, travel, lodging, everything, so as far as expenses for the town, there's nothing additional. You don't bring somebody in to replace me, the deputies on duty, and we coordinate our time off anyways for the most part. If I'm gone, he's in town and vice versa.
Okay. Any questions, discussion from the board?
The more education and knowledge, the better for us.
Absolutely. No cost to having a better equipped fire personnel, no cost to the town, perfect, yeah. Okay. Nick, do we have to vote on this, or is it something I could just request you to do the?
We need to write a letter.
Letter of reference.
I would suggest, for the record, to make.
Make a motion?
For the letter of reference.
Is there?
Just know that this will require time commitments, as I would have achieved.
Okay. Is there a motion to provide a letter of reference for Chief Morseth to attend the National Fire Academy's Executive Fire Training Officers Program, knowing that it will take a couple of weeks of the year of his time, but also knowing that it will provide him with additional knowledge and capabilities to perform his duties?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appreciate it, thank you. And the last one, currently in legislation in the state, there is a bill on the books to require fire chiefs become credentialed within the state of Massachusetts. It's fairly close. The program is out there, and it's, out of 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth, I believe there's 106 or 126 credentialed fire chiefs already. I meet all the criteria. Basically, it's a formality of submitting the application, cover letter. I need to submit two letters of reference, and I would appreciate, I'm requesting that the board, I submit one from the board, I feel that's a strong point, if I get the backing of the board, so I would be credentialed. It's a program that you need to maintain 70 hours of continuing, 72 hours of continuing education every three years, which if I'm accepted in an executive fire officer program, that well exceeds it. But I'm always been the one that's always encouraged training, so I don't have a problem attending training.
Okay. Any question, discussion?
No.
Is there a motion to provide a letter of recommendation for Chief Morseth to become a Massachusetts credentialed fire chief?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Now. Chief Melis, enter and sign in, please. I could tell how anxious you were.
I'm waiting.
You know, I thought you were stuck there for a minute, how are you?
Hi, Chief.
Okay. We've got a few items with you. Do we know if item B is executive, Nick?
I believe it would be if the chief's going to give some specifics on personnel, perhaps under individuals' right to privacy and/or deployment of security personnel.
Okay. We'll start with item A, which is update on the recruits.
They're into week four of a 20-week process. I think they have a big test coming up, I think, like week six or seven. Everything seems to be moving along smoothly, and I haven't received any phone calls from the director, so that's always a good sign right there, and.
Nobody's getting detention in other ways, am I?
No, no, extra laps or anything else, so hoping to get them through and out, and out on the streets sometime in August, late summer.
Great, sounds good. And then the other item is liquor license agents?
Yes, I was hoping that Jim would still be here. I think he's coming back. I know at our last meeting, we had discussed that, and I think Nick had done some research on it, and I don't think it ever came to fruition by the board.
See, now this falls under the category of be careful what you ask for.
Yeah.
Because he just came back in.
There he is. It would, I believe in, why did Jim come up there?
Could we borrow you, sir? We're discussing liquor license agents.
Is it liquor license agents?
We talked about it, and I think Nick had done some research, and I know that previous boards had talked about it, but I don't think it was ever enacted or a final vote on it.
I believe the, the, not situation. I believe the, the, not situation, but what we're looking for here is that the police on duty are acting as liquor license agents on behalf of the town in their capacity as, okay.
That they have the authority, as well as police officers, to go in and indicate that they're there not only to look for a crime, but also to look, to see that the rules and regulations of the licensing commission are being upheld.
Okay. I mean, I obviously have no problem with that, is that, should we take a vote on that?
Mr. Chairman, just by way of explanation, and looking back at some of the board minutes from that time period, my trail led to discussion about it being perhaps a warrant article. And then the minutes sort of did not indicate anything further, and I, to the best of my knowledge, it was never presented to town meeting for consideration. So it was one that the board did have interest in, but did not, to my knowledge, take any action on.
Okay, would that be an avenue to pursue?
It really can be done as a regulation by the licensing commission without going to town meeting. It's not a town meeting action.
Okay.
It could be, but it doesn't, it does not have to be.
Okay. Because this was, this could be brought up again, the board maybe didn't, I guess.
It seems to me that.
It should have been additional duty. This, the union was going to be, the oil pipe was going to be an additional duty, and that's where it ended, looks like.
What, you look like you're thinking deeply.
No, I just, I don't know if, I had talked briefly with Nick, I don't know if, and I don't know if I spoke with you, Jim, if we just want to have all the officers, or we want a supervisor, do we want a detective to have that, or do we want to just?
I think if you're going to go in that vein, that's a, that's a bigger discussion for the licensing commission, they'd make a determination whether they're going to designate an officer or a number of officers to be their closing agents, rather than the entire department. And that's a policy consideration that the board has to make, probably based on, you know, your best thoughts as to how it would operate most efficiently in the current confines of the department.
Well, what I wouldn't want to see is us creating a situation where we dedicate one or two particular officers, and then creating a situation that they couldn't do something else, and create issues with coverage or, or any of that. It would appear that in the regular course of duty, any officer in that particular situation should have the authority to, again.
My, not to interrupt, but if I didn't want to, I wouldn't. The action probably would be to authorize the, whatever officers are designated, that as part of their duties and responsibilities as a police officer, to observe and report violations of law and zoning and bylaw violations and licensing violation, that they are designated as an inspection officer of the license commission, under the authority of license commission to ask for information dealing with the operation of the license. It might not otherwise constitute a criminal action that would warrant them to be acting as police officers, to give them a little more authority with respect to license processes.
And to sort of piggyback on your thought, another thought is, I'd hate to have two or three people only designated, and then find out they're not available, you know, at a certain time when an occurrence happens, and?
Well, that's why I'm thinking if we did the supervisors, there's a supervisor working on all three shifts.
But would that cause, if, if an officer went into establishment A and noted that there were problems, then he has to call the supervisor, and the supervisor has to then come down?
If there's, generally in the circumstances that we're going to discuss later, supervisor's been one of the first responders.
Oh, okay.
At the scene. And again, those are just a couple, doesn't mean they're going to be at every single one of them, but.
Okay.
However, your situation would arise if an officer were in an establishment, observed a violation that was not a criminal violation, but was a violation of the licensing requirements. Now, he doesn't have authority to speak or to take any action with respect to that, and has to go back to the supervisor. He could write it up himself if he were authorized and report it to the board, to the chief, and then the chief would bring it to the board for your actions.
Right.
Okay. Now, should we, before we act on this in any fashion, is this something we should discuss with the police union, just as far as?
I think it's.
I don't want to make a decision tonight and then find out that?
No, I think it's, I think it's an appropriate matter to discuss with Labor Council and to just make a determination. But what you're, what we're discussing here is really not asking them to take on any new duties or responsibilities.
Not at all.
But just to actually fold into what are already their responsibilities.
Increase their scope as you will.
Right.
Enhance it, Dave. Because that's the question here on the, this was the minutes from 25th, 2011, and that's the last line. You're going to be notified about the request for the police to be designated as licensing board agents, determine this would be an additional duty, so it was noted that that was a question.
Right.
Okay, so that should be our, well, we will talk to Labor Council and see and get some, get some feedback before we determine what course we'll take.
Generally speaking, seems like a good idea.
Yes, yeah. Okay. Now, I think your other item is, as we said, is an executive, so you had the pleasure of hanging out while you were going to be here for a while anyways.
It's item 27, it's about the hazardous waste day. I don't know if the chiefs might want to just?
Oh, sure.
Talk a little bit if you're prepared. I'd asked the chiefs to, if you don't mind, I'll just explain.
Go ahead.
The board. So every year, the town has participated with the household hazardous waste day, and it's that time now to start planning already for that event. And so, you know, in advance of the meeting, I had asked the chiefs for some input on whether or not we should continue participating, or at least hosting here. It's up to the board as to whether or not you want to continue participating. And so, with, if the chiefs wouldn't mind maybe talking a little bit about with the board. Obviously, last year's was.
Well, last year it ended up like in the Field of Dreams, because, you know, we had traffic coming from every direction, and we sort of made friends all up and down Summers Road, so we, if we, you know, we might want to consider, obviously if we continue to do it, to get some sort of traffic pattern that only goes one way possibly, or?
I think, speaking with Nick, I think one of the concerns last year was we booked more than ever. And I believe their plan this year was to limit the numbers, to basically just to, that was, like you say, I mean, we were backed up past, almost to the rotary.
Right. And I know, and I know they booked based on time, you know, increments of time, but I know we had quite a few trucks that had 100 pounds of stuff in them, or, you know, instead of the household people bringing up five gallons of paint or whatever it is, and they go, it's a hit and, you know, hit and run type of thing, they go, they get their stuff out and they leave. You've got these trucks that took 15, 20 minutes because they had to bring over the chemists and everything else, so that, that, you know, you could have had done 10 people in the amount of time that they were there, so that caused a problem also.
I know, and speaking with, Pat's here, Sergeant Manley was the day sergeant that day, and we wound up putting an officer out directing traffic and creating kind of detours and everything, so.
Right, I had, I had guys in the street queuing cars.
Yep.
Working, working with the police department, we were queuing cars all, like I say, back almost past, past the DPW building, and it was.
I think ideally, because that's a heavy on a Saturday between the town, waste dump being open, fire, and the event you have a fire, police and the ambulance trying to get in and out. I think ideally, if you could find another off-site location, if there's a.
I was going to suggest a high school.
I know Package Machinery where Blue Homes was, they used it for the, for the brush pickup after the.
I think part of the concern with packages, there's no facilities there for anybody to use, as far as restrooms, any of that stuff, so there's.
How about the high school parking, you could use the whole parking area, you know, out front, all the way around, have it come on down, and then rotate through the park and let them back out again, they'd give you a long line.
I don't, I just think the schools might be a little eerie in the event, right? This is spilt.
Okay.
Because we have, we have had small incidents at the station.
Do you have thoughts about where?
Probably better to have it there.
What's that?
Do you have ideas?
I think the old Package Machinery, because it's so deep, that parking area there, and if they can get a Santa can for the day, or move it from a soccer field for the day, and have it there, you can queue the cars up, loop them around and out.
Even the left side of the building, that's got asphalt way down the left side of the building.
Chestnut's a little wider than Summers Road is, and.
And chestnut's not as well-traveled as Summers Road. We had a lot of people that were trying to get to soccer games. There was an event at Elmcrest that day, they were trying to get to Elmcrest.
There was a tractor trailer that was coming down Summers Road, I'll never forget that, so.
I think that was.
Traffic on both sides of the street.
He was coming to the event, though.
Was it, oh, was that the Clean Harbors truck?
He was coming to the event.
I think it's an important, it's an important service to.
I think it's huge.
Obviously, judging by the, you know.
So we should?
The scary thing is, is people still have stuff every year, and it gets, I think it's bigger every year, pretty much, and you think it'd be.
You have to be getting rid of stuff, tailing off a little bit, yeah.
But the good news is, obviously, they're getting rid of it, you know, the more we have these, the more.
They're getting rid of it the right way.
Yeah, because think about these people who have this in their basement or their garage or something, you know? But I don't think, we already, I don't know how we'd go about getting permission from.
Mr. Chairman, might I suggest then, it seems clear to me that the board and the chiefs are in support of the event, you know, in general, because of the impact that it has. It's, it sounds like the fire station really is, the event has either outgrown it, or really still is, we've been somewhat fortunate to date with how it's gone. So with the board's permission, there is a sort of an ad hoc group of the different communities that we should be meeting soon after this meeting, and made it known that the board would be talking about. So I could carry the message that, look, East Long Meadows is still interested in participating, but we really should consider alternatives, whether it's an alternative site, or, I guess the question that would come out of committee would be, well, would the board support it if we limited it to, I don't know, X number of vehicles total? Or do we want to eliminate that question altogether? And I don't expect that the board will have that answer this evening, but if it comes down to it, then, you know, look for other sites, so with.
Another thing to consider is, what is it, Long Meadows, East Long Meadows?
Overham.
Overham.
Lovelaw.
Is there a site in one of the other four towns that might possibly be held at? I mean, I know we love doing this, but we don't have to corner the market on.
On hazardous waste.
On hazardous waste, no. If there's a, if there's some spot in one of those other towns where it could be held just as conveniently, it's a larger, larger area, so you may want to bring that up at the meeting also.
Well, there were, the first two or three years that I participated, it was held at Minutawat at that time.
I went there, it was, it was small, there was hardly anybody there.
Well, that's the problem, is now we've got, we have 400 cars? Would we book 400?
It's kind of like the shred event.
Would it be possible to contact the owners of Package Machinery? I don't know if Blue Homes is.
Well, with the, with the board's okay, I'll just go ahead and look at all the different options and come back with a report.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Now, we've got a hearing, can, can we take like a two-minute recess? Do you mind?
No, that's fine, you need to.
Can we make a motion for a two-minute recess?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we, I'd like to apologize, I'm, it's got this silly little head cold, and it's causing me more grief than it's worth, so, so I want to apologize for the brief delay. Our next item is a liquor license hearing, and it's for the Meadows. I'd like to invite Manny and whoever else is coming up, and the chief. I don't know if we have enough chairs, but, I'm not shaking your hand, because you'll get sick. How are you?
I'm a piece of grill.
All right, welcome all. How are you?
How are you?
We're here for, obviously, we're here for liquor license hearing, and what I'd like to begin is have the clerk read the, read the notice into record.
Okay, very good. This letter was dated February 11th, addressed to Manuel Coelho, manager of the Meadows, 621 North Main Street, East Long Meadows. The Board of Selectmen, acting as licensing authority, orders you to appear before the board for a hearing regarding recent incidents that occurred on Sunday, January 13th, 2013, and Monday, January 28th, 2013, at the Meadows. The hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, February 26th, 2013, at 6:45 PM in the media room, East Long Meadows, Council on Aging. The board will hear evidence and testimony regarding violations, including but not limited to failure to have appropriate personnel on duty to ensure public safety. Copies of the police reports from the incidents on January 13th and January 28th are included in this correspondence. If the board finds any or all of the above-mentioned violations occurred, it may take appropriate action, which may include the modification, suspension, or revocation of this license. Your attendance is required. The bartenders and/or bartender on duty at the time of the incident is also required to attend. You may be represented by council and present evidence and testimony in these matters. Respectfully yours, Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. I think we're going to begin by deferring to the police chief, who will give the details of the hearing, and I believe there's some officers here who responded to the calls, and we can go from there.
Yes, on the first incident that we, to be seen for information, was January, Sunday, January 13th. When an individual came to the station, reported she was assaulted at the Club Meadows. For some unknown reason, she thought she was in Springfield and had gone down to the Springfield Police Department to make this report, and that was directed to our department. By the time she came, they were in the process of closing, I don't believe anything else was available at the time. I just, you know, we notify the board as a liquor commissioner, as when there's incidents of a fight scenario that happened down there. Apparently, this took place down in the, the room in the basement of the facility. Our investigation is still ongoing, we're unable to come up with who it was that actually headbutted this girl. She came up to her and punched her in the forehead with her fist, I'm sorry. Aimed to look at the injury, she declined, photos were taken, and we received information on who the perpetrator was. The party had, was over, and nobody was around there involved in that incident. So we're kind of following up with that, we have no other information. Again, that was January 13th that that took place. We received no call from the club, they may not have even been aware that this individual was assaulted. So that's, that's basically what I have on that incident on the 13th. The most recent incident that had taken place was the assault on Monday, January 28th. At about 3, 3:15 PM?
It is afternoon, yeah.
Yeah, about 3:30. And apparently, there was a disturbance out in the parking lot at Club Meadows, and it became to be verbal between two females that had apparently been using the facility, the basement facility at Club Meadows, for an after funeral reception. And for whatever reason, it became heated, an argument ensued out in the parking lot as people were trying, as people were leaving. And kind of push came to shove, words were back and forth between, I believe they were two sisters. And Pat, do you want to add to it? You wound up doing the investigation on that.
Both of these incidents occurred at private party settings, not during the normal course of the business. Like the chief said, the first incident occurred at late night downstairs, there was some kind of pushing and shoving, there was no police before it, there was no one, it did come to our attention this sometime later. The second incident occurred, it was a funeral, after the funeral, they had a brunch at the facility, they were downstairs in the basement, no alcohol was served at that, that event, and none of the people involved had consumed any alcohol, as best we could tell. It got to be a family argument, families get very emotional, two sisters were screaming at each other in the parking lot, and each of their boyfriends got out, got into a confrontation, one of the individuals pulled out a box cutter and cut the other individual rather severely from the eye socket, back behind his ear, across his head, it was a very serious injury. The individual responsible.
The individual responsible was charged, it's an open criminal case right now. And when we went down to the bar, we did get cooperation and assistance in identifying who the players were, who was responsible, who was the people, who was responsible for getting the room, who was, who were the players in the fight. We did receive a degree of cooperation from the staff there. It was a little better than the cooperation, considerably better than the cooperation we got at, at the other establishment where we recently had a problem. Both of these incidents were, were personal assaults occurring at a licensed establishment, and we thought it was appropriate to bring them before the Board and let you know the type of activity that has occurred, and also to let you know the type of cooperation we got from the, from the staff. And like, on the first one, I don't think the staff was hardly aware of it, nor were we. There was no calls made by individuals in the bar, gee, there was a fight going on, this person came in an hour after. And the second incident, police responded and detained people at the scene, found out what was going on, got a lot of cooperation, and it led to an arrest. So that was kind of the difference in our, our response to the two places.
The, the owner and manager, Mr. Coelho, had called my office the following day, and asked to come in personally and discuss with me what had happened. I had Sergeant Manley sit down on a conversation. Manny had provided the bill. This woman had planned this, had brought in her own food, there was no alcohol that was served, and I think he had a receipt for $29 worth of soda that was there.
I have it with me.
He was, Manny was very upset that this happened in this facility, and, you know, I've, I've had activities with Manny in the past, and I've always found him to be forward in, in things that, events that have happened on his premises, and he just, he just didn't want to be lumped into that category, it was something that he really had, the staff had real no control on it, other than to call it when, when the fight started out in the parking lot.
For what's worth on the first incident, we're not really sure what they had for security there, it was in the evening, it involved alcohol, it involved music and dancing, it was, it was a more of a high-risk situation for a liquor establishment. The second event, there was a bartender in the room, and the thing, the events didn't occur in the establishment, they occurred outside the parking lot. That's a situation where we, we probably wouldn't expect them to have security there.
I was going to ask you that, what's the-
Although, the first one, we would, and I don't think the security really got involved with the first one, so did somebody miss something there? I think Manny's reviewing that, trying to bring his staff up. But the second one, we, our expectation of security wasn't as high a level, and of course, a much more serious event occurred.
I have the same question with regards to someone leaving the property, being in the parking lot, at what point does responsibility, I don't know?
Probably civilly, their liability costs-
I mean, everybody left, the lights were off, the doors were locked, everybody was gone, and next thing we know, somebody comes running and screaming, it was-
And I assume, although your liability runs the end of the parking lot, you have people following you go out in the parking lot, it takes away from the inside, where, you know, so. But I guess, because this isn't my, you know, forte, I don't know if there's any other questions from the Board, but, I don't know, Chief, I think I'm going to, because you're still investigating the first incident, I mean, I don't know how far you're going to progress, how cooperative the person who was injured is. There's, that wasn't a serious injury. It, the people, I think, are known to each other, but not known specifically identified by name, and I don't think any complaints have arisen out of that yet. I'm not sure that it will, I think it's more, I'm not sure. If it does, it'll end up with a show cause hearing, because it's a misdemeanor assault battery.
Not being an expert, also, you are, what's your suggestion? Do you have one for us? Something that we should look at? Something that Mr. Coelho should look at?
Well, how should we proceed with this matter, I guess, is what-
I mean, to be fair, we did a notification, the second incident was a lot worse than the first one that we had. I, I think, in some sense, it was uncontrollable, due to the fact that it was out, away from it. It wasn't like you're sitting there watching someone doing shots at a bar all night, just waiting for him to fall off the stool, or she to fall off the stool. And there's no indication, we can tell the subject that was arrested, if he was under the influence of alcohol.
There was no, no indication of any of the people involved in the parking lot incident, having consumed alcohol.
That was the one that-
That's the one that was-
So severe, cut.
So this is something that might have happened, whether it was there in a bar, in a parking lot, at home, in the driveway, or whatever.
Yeah, supermarket parking lot.
It appears to me that you've taken the initiative to speak with the chief and try to, you know, figure out what else-
Makes me very concerned, and upsets me very much, yes.
I'm sure it does, and, and obviously, we want your business to be successful, and being successful as it is, and it means being safe.
See, I take Club Meadows as my job, I've been worked at for 24 years, and when something happened that I can't do anything, that upsets me very much personally, yes.
Well, it's okay, I, I, I think that it speaks volumes about your taking the initiative to, to meet with the chief and, and show your concern. I think that, that speaks volumes about the type of person you are.
Thank you.
Have you used security in the past, Manny?
Yes.
Okay.
I have security, every weekend.
You know when it gets down to a ban or things like that?
I have LPs, myself every night, it's my job.
I know you're there all the time, right? Okay, good. Thanks for coming in.
Okay, so, what do you, Chief, should we just take this under advisement, and hopefully there'll be no other incidences, but obviously, if there are any, then-
I think that probably inappropriate.
Good, all right, great.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, if the hearing's about to break up, I, I don't know, I know that the Board was referring to Mr. Coelho, just for the record, could the individuals with him just identify themselves for the record?
Oh, sure, sorry.
Christopher Lawson, owner and operator of Lumpy's Grill, inside Club Meadows.
I was the bartender at the funeral reception.
Okay.
I've been, Lisa Gilmat, I've been working there 20 years.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night. Our next hearing is for Piscopo's Restaurant, so if the parties who are interested in coming up would come up, we'd appreciate it.
After I read it.
Gentlemen? Yeah. We're too far away to shake hands, I'm sick anyways, you don't want to shake my hand. How are you? Okay, once, once again, this is a liquor license hearing, so I will have the clerk read the notice into the record.
Okay. This letter was addressed to Michael Torsho, manager of Piscopo's, 642, 644 North Main Street, East Long Meadow. The Board of Selectmen, acting as the licensing authority, orders you to appear before the Board for a hearing regarding recent incidents that occurred on Saturday, December 1st, 2012, and Friday, January 25th, 2013, at Piscopo's Restaurant. The hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, February 26th, 2013, at 7:00 PM in the media room, East Long Meadow, Council of Aging. The Board will hear evidence and testimony regarding violations, including but not limited to failure to have adequate personnel on duty to ensure public safety, potential violation of the town zoning bylaw with respect to food service requirements for restaurants, with findings sent to the planning board and special permit granting authority. Copies of the police reports for December 1st and January 25th are enclosed, be advised that the Board reserves the right to conduct a hearing with respect to the incident on December 1st, as per your appointment with the Board on December 11th. If the Board finds any or all of the above-mentioned violations occurred, it may take action, which may include the modification, suspension, revocation of this license. Your attendance is requested, the bartenders on duty at the time are also requested to attend. You may represent, you may be represented by counsel and present evidence and testimony in these matters. Truly yours, Selectmen. There is a sign-in sheet here, for, for those who are here, if you could do that as well. There's a sign-in sheet?
It's going around.
It's going around, okay, great, very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Once again, in regard to these incidences, I will defer to the police chief, who has the detailed information that they have regarding them.
And again, not to defer, but I will defer to Sergeant Manning, as he is-
Defer?
Sergeant Manning, and Officer Ingles responded that night, and two of them are here right now, so. Steve, if you want to just-
We'll start with the, the first incident in December. I was notified of some sort of a disturbance at the, at the facility, by radio. I happened to be parked right at Cityline Package Store, which is right next door, so I was the first one I've seen, I was there within seconds of being notified on radio. Initially, my, my only involvement immediately was to assist the injured person, he was, suffered from a serious cut to his, to his forehead, so I was administering first aid at that point, waiting for the ambulance to show up, he was bleeding heavily. So that was my involvement there. Officer Ingles arrived shortly thereafter, and he took over the investigation and spoke to witnesses and employees at the time, so I did defer to him for that, for more information that he got.
All right. When I arrived at Piscopo's on that night, when I arrived, Sergeant Manning was dealing with the injured person. There was a lot of people outside, a lot of people trying to leave the bar. A large group had kind of congregated around where the gentleman was injured, some of them we had to give back, they were, they were pretty heated up by what had just taken place. There seemed to be a lot of, there was a blood trail from where he was standing back into the bar. I went inside, as you walk into the right, you can see a large, large pool of blood, almost where the floor looked red, chairs were strewn out, there was glass on the floor. At first, no one really, one of the bartenders had come out and told us what had taken place, they said they didn't know who the person was. The people inside, a couple of bartenders, and then Ms. Gothier had shown up, she had stated that, you know, you guys know who it is, you need to tell them. According to what she said, everybody knew who it was, but nobody wanted to talk. We tried to talk to some people, there was one witness that came forward, that he had later spoken to, but she couldn't pick the person out of the lineup. That's, I don't know if you have any more questions about the scene, or?
Yeah, I know, I know, Chief, we, when we had discussed this the first time, there was an issue about who was the manager on scene.
Right, there was a question on who was there, one of the, in one of the statements there, Mike, I think it talks about a Siobhan?
Gothier.
Siobhan Gothier, apparently arriving, I don't know if she was, I don't know if she was on scene, or she came afterwards?
She came afterwards, when I got there, she wasn't there. She had, once we were, Sergeant Manning and I were inside the bar, it was after the victim had left, that's when I first talked to her.
And I think at our December meeting, shortly after this happened, I think Mr. Santinello said that he was downstairs at the time, and had come up in the aftermath of all this, so that was, who was there, who wasn't there, we don't know, you know, Siobhan or, the, the female had said that she was in charge, and I think Mr. Santinello came up afterwards or during our meeting in December, had said that he was there all along, or downstairs.
Nobody spoke to Mr. Santinello? You didn't speak to any officers that evening, correct?
Correct. Now, why don't we go into the second incident?
The second incident happened on January 20- The 25th. And Steve, I think you were the first one there as well?
Again, yes, again, I was the first one to arrive on scene, so again, my first, my primary job at that point was to attend to the injured person. I was guided inside by the, the staff, that evening was very helpful to us. The names of those, the staff, I do not know right now, but anybody that identified themselves as, as staff members of Piscopo's were very helpful. They guided me to the corner where the injured party was, and again, he was bleeding from the head, and I administered first aid, waiting for the ambulance again. Officer Sousa was the next I've seen, and he took over the, the investigation at that point, so I can defer to him.
I arrived maybe a minute or two after Sergeant Manning, as I was pulling in their cars, pulling out Piscopo's parking lot, the prior parking lot adjacent to it. But when I got into Piscopo's, when I got into the restaurant, there were probably 40 or 50 people remaining inside. Sergeant Manning was attending to the victim, so I spoke to the bartenders, they informed me that the suspect had already left. Both bartenders that were working identified by name, were very cooperative, voluntarily gave statements, and they both later came in to assist in doing a photo lineup and identify the suspect. That was, pretty much, there was a, there was a manager on scene, Mary Ann Dynak, or she identified herself as the manager. I didn't see, I was in there, didn't see any security personnel, or that, anyone that could be easily identified, the security staff. No food, it was just dirty plates or anything like that. If there are any other questions about-
Okay, thank you. Are there any other items that you want to mention, Chief, regarding the evening, or?
Again, it's, and it was discussed previously, there's an issue on a restaurant and a bar. I believe the license is that food would be available, food would be served, I believe Officer Sousa had put a comment in there about there were no dishes that were readily available or present, and this is, this is a continuing concern. If the license is for, to be running it as a restaurant, then it's a restaurant. It's not a bar.
Right.
And this is an ongoing problem, I think. Again, I have it from anonymous individuals, whether they want to be involved or not, going in and asking for a menu and being told, "Call Peppa's, they deliver." So this isn't a fueling point, we don't want the general public coming in here just ordering drinks. It's not a bar, it's a restaurant.
I mean, they-
They have a bar facility there to-
Right.
Provide a drink with your meal.
And just to specify, they can't come in and just order drinks, but they have to have food available, it's not, you know, it's not a requirement toward food, but, I guess, I'm trying to think of which way to proceed, now, I know you guys have been in front of us a couple of times, and after the first incident, did you, was there any, were there any bouncers or any security-type people ever put into place?
Yes.
Sure, go ahead.
Can I speak?
Sure.
I'm Richard Torsho, Mike's, I'm here on behalf of my dad. What we'd like to present to you now is, since the December meeting, when we were here, we saw how upset the chief was with us, and we started to implement and make changes to make Piscopo's be a better place, a safer place, and more secure. We know it's a privilege to have a liquor license, and we know it's our job and our responsibility to offer a safe environment. So what we did, and, and it's still being implemented, and it's unfortunate that the second incident happened, but we, I think the officer said we were more cooperative, or not maybe more cooperative, he said we were very cooperative the second time, so it's one of the things we try to do, is make sure that our staff is forthright and forthcoming, and offer as much information when an incident like this happens. So what I'd like to share with you is just a little pamphlet of some- So what I'd like to share with you is just a little pamphlet of some things we did. It's for each of you. This was all done since we left the December meeting and it's still in the works now. So I'm just going to go over with you.
Sure. Go ahead. Okay, this will be entered in as exhibit one.
What's that?
This is just being entered in as exhibit one.
Okay.
What's that?
Oh.
Oh, he can't, he can't get that on the?
You need to see it?
Well, it'd be nice.
How's that?
That's better. There you go.
We can see it. I've got my glasses.
So it's our Squawlys priority to offer our customers and guests a secure and safe environment. We take this very seriously and have taken precautions to eliminate any unsafe occurrences from happening. Since we last met with the board on December 11th, we have initiated and implemented specific steps to ensure we offer our customers and patrons a secure and safe environment each and every time they visit the Squawlys. It's the utmost priority of the Squawlys to ensure that we are a safe place for all. So the safety and security preventative measures that we did were four basic measures. The first was a camera surveillance system. We contracted with Fitzgerald alarm to install a thirty-two camera surveillance system throughout the Squawlys, the lounge and the restaurant. These cameras are placed strategically in different areas to monitor the lounge and restaurant. These tapes will be monitored and reviewed regularly by the managers and supervisors. The purpose of this will be to monitor customer and staff behavior as well as to prevent the over-serving of alcohol. Number two, every one of our, TIP certified training for intervention procedures, every one of our staff member is TIP certified. What we did since December 10th was we made everybody retake the TIP course. You can do it online and it lasts maybe three to four hours. This way, it refreshed everybody's mind. It brought to the forefront the specific ways to treat and deal with incidences. So to us, that's one of the most important things we did, and I'm going to go over that with you after. Number three, security training. All staff will be trained in security to ensure they know the necessary course of action to be taken. It is important for all staff members to know when to act and what to do for specific situations. We had a retired state police officer come in, and we had two meetings since the December 10th, appearing in front of the board, and teach our staff how to be better at security, what to do, how to act, you know, what is their role. The fourth thing is security personnel. Security personnel on duty will ensure public safety. Doorman will be trained to prevent loitering, loitering at the entrance and around the perimeter of the restaurant. The doorman will check IDs for a valid government-issued ID. However, this shall be supplemental only and will not diminish the responsibility of the waitstaff and the bartenders. We have hired security personnel. We now have a doorman on, at the, at the front door when entering. Everyone's asked to show their ID and the doorman is there to watch for any disturbances, anybody out of line, to keep people in line. So let me, let me go back to the TIPS, the Training for Intervention Procedures. It's on the second page. I'm not, are you, are you, must all be familiar with TIPS? Okay. All of us have taken it and here, which I'll give to the board, are all our, the new TIP certifications that were taken within the last couple of months.
Yeah.
So TIPS, TIPS is, it's a, it's a really good course to take and it goes over some specific topics. The first topic that it goes over is legal information, which presents, presents the legal responsibility for servers of alcohol. It explains the types of illegal sales, provides extensive information about checking IDs and documenting incidents. The second topic is assess your guests in a legal way. Allows a user to apply the legal information to real-life scenarios through practical application exercises. That's when you're taking the course. The third is alcohol information. Describes how alcohol affects people, their size, their weight, how one drink affects a smaller person, how one drink affects a bigger person. Signs of intoxication to look for and relevant information about alcohol that the server can use to serve more responsibly. The fourth topic's assess your guests related to alcohol. Allows a user to apply alcohol information to real-life scenarios through practical application exercises. The fifth is intervention information. Gives a user numerous guidelines for providing customer-friendly, responsible alcohol service. And the last is decide and implement. It allows a user to apply the intervention information to real-life scenarios. So we believe this is the most important thing for, for our staff and for, for our customers. If all of our staff is TIP certified and they're freshly TIP certified, that, that brings everything all into one, one course. Goes over every single topic that I just described. We believe by, by implementing and taking these measures, we are going to offer a safer place. It's unfortunate that so soon we had a second incident, but I don't want the police chief or the board to think we're sitting back and doing nothing, because that's not the case. We've owned the Squawlys, it'll be eleven years in July, and we're proud to own the Squawlys. We're East Long Metal residents. I was born and brought up here. I don't want to, I don't, this is bad publicity for us. No one's going to want to come to the Squawlys if, if things like this keep happening. So we want to do everything we can to offer a safe place. And I believe we are taking initiative and have taken initiative to do the right things and take the right steps to make sure the Squawlys is a safe place. So that's, that's our background since December 10th, what we have been doing and continue to do. Now, the incident that just happened in January twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
We can answer any questions you have about that.
Okay, a couple of questions before I defer to the chief, but I noticed, I mean, the first incident occurred at the beginning of December. When did you start your doorman? When did the first come on?
We started the doorman, we've always had a doorman on busy nights. For whatever reason, the night of the party of December 10th, there wasn't a doorman on. Right after, I'm sorry, the incident in November, right after our December 10th meeting, we had a doorman on every night.
Because I know, okay, that's, that's fine, but I noticed with the TIP certification, ninety percent of these people have been done within the last three, four weeks, so it was after the second incident. So I don't know, I mean, it's just my, you know, my observation that this wasn't really done after the first incident. It took the second incident in order for it to happen, but I'm just, you know, just judging by the dates on here, I may be wrong, it may be issued after the fact, but, but obviously you're, you know, you're, you're making strides in trying to make the place a safer place. However, you know, you've had a couple of serious incidences and I, you know, I don't want to, I mean, I'm not going to, it's not my position to decide, if you will, but, you know, you'd hate to see something even worse severe happen. I mean, you know, this latest incident, I mean, it's, first of all, it's just, it just baffles me why that person would do that, but that's, you know, if you think about the circumstances, but I don't know, I mean, I'm going to defer to the chief to see what, what he would like to do, because I, like I said, once again, this isn't my forte and I, you know, I'm not going to be the one to have the ability. Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
I applaud your presentation. I think as a family, and I know you're, you're trying to make things right. The situation in Springfield, if I'm allowed to say this, that the situation in Springfield where the bar is closing earlier, I'm wondering if this is part of your problem, the later crowd coming in, that's not your normal patrons. I are patrons. I'm wondering if a stronger form of deterrence would be better than what you have employed, in other words, named off-duty police officer for a time or for certain days during the week until people get the word that, don't go to Pasquale's and start a fight at two o'clock in the morning, one o'clock in the morning. That's just something that I look at. I, and I, again, I applaud your effort. You brought things forward very well. We can see where I can see, and I think Paul can and probably Debbie, that you're trying to do something, but like, like the chairman said, if something worse happens now, it's really going to be bad. So I'm in favor of, it's, it's my opinion that maybe a stronger deterrent, being visible at your place for a certain amount of time or as a time prescribed by the chief, would be the right way to go for a time. That's one of my thoughts.
That's where we defer to the chief.
Well, I agree in that I've heard other establishments who also in the same situation have had incidents happen in the past, don't want them to happen because we want them to be safe and we want people to come and we want you to be successful. Having employed some off-duty police for a time made a difference. And I heard good things about that experience for that particular establishment and it may be that just having someone on duty for a time might show people that, that, that you have that protection there. It'll make your, your other patrons feel safer and eliminate the problem that you perhaps are worrying about yourself, which is having people be scared to come there if there's going to be violence. If you have an off-duty police officer there, you're going to feel a little bit better about that. But again, I'd let the chief speak more about your experience with that.
We had that, we had an issue with another establishment a number of years ago and, and that was a remedy to it, that a police officer was hired inside. He'd be inside, he'd be outside, he'd be all around the area there. And he was there for the closing hours, so there wasn't, weren't skirmishes in the parking lot. People weren't afraid to go to their car because they may have looked at someone different at the, inside the facility. And I don't think we had a call for service for any problems up there during that, when that program was in place. And that went on for three, four months?
Yes. I believe at first it was, you know, people are, you know, they don't want the uniformed police officer in your business, and I understand that. But once it was implemented, they could see that, oh, this is a good thing, because it calmed things down and people don't, I mean, we're police officers, we're not like, we're not out to get you, we're there to, to help you. And I think the patrons that you, that they want in the establishment that are there to have a drink, to have something to eat, they don't see that as a problem to have with the police presence, but it did eliminate any calls for service there.
I, I think somehow, some way, that, that could be a remedy to probably future problems at your, at your restaurant.
Could I say something?
Mm-hmm.
On that night of the second episode, there were off-duty police officers with the fire lieutenant, the Springfield fire lieutenant, who did this. So the Springfield fire and police were in there off-duty.
We're talking?
We're talking about, yeah. We're talking about?
I know what you're saying, but I'm saying we had a very professional crowd in there and that's what we?
And it still happened.
Our patrons, so, I'm just saying that we have?
This person would be working for you, so to speak. This would be correct, so to speak?
That would be his function.
So?
Still works for the town.
Okay. Indirectly.
Can we propose to the board and to the chief, we'd be more than happy to meet with the board for the next, for the next six months, every thirty days, and let us, allow us to continue to make our improvements and to hire our security that we feel is necessary for the busy nights or the slow nights. I believe we can, we've already worked to, to correct the situation. I think, you know, I would propose to, to let us make the improvements ourself. We'll come in in thirty days, we'll come in in sixty days, we'll come in in ninety days. And then, then we can make it, you know, we could see what the chief says at that time. But I believe we can, we've, we're on the right path. I believe we're taking the right steps. I believe we can hire security for the, more security than what it cost of a police officer. No offense to the police department, but I believe we can accomplish the same goal, you know, within, within our, our own business.
If I just might add, no offense, and I don't mean offense taken, okay? But I, I've seen private security in other facilities and it's to take care of you, make you happy and everything, but who are they letting do whatever they want to do? I look at it as we're like one-stop shopping, okay? We're there, the detail officer is there, he sees a violation, he's going to take whatever corrective action and notification to the board, which is the liquor commissioners, on the issue. He's also going to probably tell you, hey, look at, maybe this person shouldn't be doing this, this or whatever, but that, that's the problem. I, I don't need to have a private security company come in and then we're going to have a battle with them trying to get in there if an incident happens. Or are they going to be pushing them out the door to have the fight out in the parking lot and wiping up the floor in the process? If we're going, we're going to go. If we're going to be doing this, my recommendation to the board is I would like to see a detail officer assigned for a period of time to be re-examined, to be looked, and again, you're the owner of the business. I'm not anti-business, but if there's days of the week that it doesn't make sense to stay open at two o'clock in the morning because God knows what's going to roll in if the city's shutting down at one. They're going to be coming in, they're going to be staying at your place, and they're not going in and they're not sitting down having a, a plate of pasta. You know, they're going to be sitting at the bar looking to get another shot or a beer or whatever. And that, that's, that's the underlying theme here. This goes back to, back in two thousand eight or two thousand nine, when we went down there and it was a bar menu, which was not acceptable per the liquor license. It's a full menu, a menu that's to be served during their operations, and that hasn't been happening. As the officer noted, there was one or two dirty plates, but there was beer glasses from that December incident and God knows what was there in the January incident with the bar assault. That, that's, that's the problem. That's the issue.
I think that the chief's point is the correct point. I think it's very important that at this point, we just stop those people so they don't say, where are you going right now? The bars are closed. They're going to Pasquale's. They go somewhere else, preferably not in East Long Metal. And I don't think they will go to East Long Metal, because that's the closest place. Hopefully not to Mr. Cuado's place either, but, so my, my recommendation would be with the chief is to, for now, get your, get your plans going that are good and start getting that, that program developed, but have a duty, a uniformed police officer there just so people go, I was a cop there last time, now going up there. Give it a chance, nothing permanent, and hopefully that'll take care of that situation. The other situation is the food. The bylaws say, and under special permit, because I was one of the ones that voted on it, you have to have a full menu available during hours operation. So that's another subject that we have to discuss and that, you know, it's not a serious somebody getting injured, but you're violating your special permit at that point. It's not a subject I'd like to have to bring up, but it's the way it is and whoever the owners are assigned for your special permit to reopen Pasquale's, as every restaurant does that serves alcohol, you'll have a full menu available. And that's something that you're going to have to live up to, because that's the way the law is.
What is the full menu?
We, we do offer a full menu. Do we sell a lot of food at eleven o'clock at night? No. Are you going to see a lot of plates? No. We have a kitchen staff on until we close.
Okay, because that's, that's all the requirements. You don't have to serve the food, but the guy that's going to cook the filet mignon or the burger or make a grinder has to be there and the food has to be available. So if somebody comes in that has had alcohol and says, I need something to eat, obviously that can happen.
Yes.
Not that it makes it that much better, but it does help out a bit. So that's something we have to be able to somehow verify that that's happening.
We do offer it. Till we close, same menu.
I don't know how we verify it. I don't know. I think need some more input from other members, but it's, it's a sticky point.
And just my opinion is, I realize you getting your own people might be a little less expensive than having the police, but if it was me, and obviously it's not, but if it was me, I'm sitting here and realizing that if you got your own people and you had one more incident, you know, that, that could be it. I mean, it's, ultimately, it's a small price to pay, even temporarily. And then once people see, you know, whatever nights it is, people see, oh, there's a, there's a officer in there. If they're not, if they're not there just to have a good time, if you will, and they want to cause trouble, they'll go somewhere else. Then after a while, you can lighten up on them. else. Then, after a while, you can lighten up on that. You know, in the meantime, get your own security people, and their bouncers, or whatever you get, but at least that image is there, you know, of an officer, and the people that, you know, the people that want to, you know, like you said, aren't there just to have a good time, would be deterred. So, I mean, that's just my opinion. I would think it'd be, it's short money to assure that, we're not going to be sitting here again, taking your license away. You know what I mean?
It also is a good public relate, I mean--
It does send a message.
--public relations. You want, you want people to want to go there and feel safe. And you'll be providing that. That in and of itself is a statement by you, that we want you to feel safe, so much so, that we're going to have someone here, so that you can feel safe. And, chief, I don't know, I mean, do you do it for a month? Do you do it, I mean, I'm sure you've come with some ideas as to what nights are, you don't have to be there Monday through Sunday, obviously.
Probably more than likely, it's going to be a Friday, Saturday, because most places, that's the activity level. That's when you have increased business.
Would that be something that you would like to work out, or that we can allow, have you work out with the owners? I don't know how that goes.
Sure.
That would be a great way to do it. If you commit again, it's not this easy conversation. That's the problem, and we can't just let it go.
We truly believe it's two isolated incidents.
I know, but there's that injury, and I saw the pictures, I saw the staples on the guy's head, and the thing sliced. I don't know, that was the other one, but, you know, that was nasty.
And once again, we're not, we're not saying this is permanent. You can come back to us, you know, you can request to come back to us, and if you have no incidences in, you know, one, or two months, three months, and say, maybe we can--
Handle it ourselves.
--wean off the police force, and get your, you know, get your bouncers in there on a more permanent basis. And then, then you'll be back to doing what you're doing now. It'll end up costing you less, but you'll, I can't say you'll have better clientele, but you know what I mean? You're not going to have the people looking for trouble in there.
You're going to have a reputation of a no-nonsense establishment, which is great. Easier on you guys, easier on everybody.
It's also going to send a message that we're a problem.
Right.
And I, we've been working so hard to correct the situation from the December incident, that in almost eleven years, is two incidents is over eleven years. Two incidents over three months is awful, but two incidents over eleven years, you know, isn't as bad. But, it just, it's going to send a message that we're a troubled establishment. And people have come up to me on the street, and Rockies, Romitos, saying, I can't believe something like that happened, especially with a Springfield firefighter. How could that happen, you know?
That was amazing.
It's embarrassing. And then, was there an arrest--
We got to take the hit.
Did he get arrested, or charged, or--
There's a court case pending, yeah.
And, you know, maybe we could wait till the outcome and see what happened, or, you know, do we know, you know--
But, the other side of it is, you as an establishment, have the authority, you know who these players are, to say, I'm trespassing. Stay out of my business. I don't need your business. That's another step that you folks can take.
He never, he never caused a problem in there before this incident.
And he caused one this night, right?
So, now, he's not allowed in there anymore. We're not, we're not going to allow him back in there after this incident.
But, have you trespass him? Or, you just say, hey, by the way, you're not allowed in here.
Trespass him.
You know, trespass him. Sir, give him a notice, say, you're trespassing. We don't want you here. And that's up to you, you know?
That's helpful. But, we haven't, we haven't let him back in there. We didn't, we don't want troubled people like that. We didn't know before that. He was a lieutenant in the Springfield Police Department.
Fire Department.
Fire Department. What other, what other clientele would we want?
Right, you're right, you're absolutely--
We've become known--
That's a great point.
We've become, you know, we've become known as a, we get a lot of the second shift police officers, and firemen in there after eleven o'clock. I feel so safe now. You know, I mean, I feel safe anyway, but I feel extra safe when you've got three police officers over here. I mean, you know, I really think that was an isolated incident. I mean, for a fireman to cause a problem, which we don't have all the, you know, the case hasn't been heard, but for someone to be involved, you would think a public servant would diffuse an incident, not cause an incident. So--
Point well taken. Point well taken, okay? And that's, and that's fine. But, I think that you need to have discussion with the chief of police--
Okay.
--and get a form that's going to work. Make the board happy, keep you guys out of trouble. Because, in my mind, your explanation is indicative of what I explained. Nothing for all these years, twice in the past few months, when they closed the bars down early in Springfield, put a stop to it now, and then go on with your business. And I think that's the best, the best menu for success here.
Do I understand the board, that it will be a trial period, or a temporary period?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Won't be a--
Absolutely, no.
--long-term--
And the chief--
Yeah, because long-term, obviously, financially, is, could be draining, but, yeah, we can work through us, or with the chief, or with the police force, and as things go along, see how, you know, see how things are going, and take it from there. We're not saying you have to do it permanently.
It really does stink.
And that's, that's the point. Just to, just to let everybody downtown know, don't go there.
So, if we were to hire--
Because I know you don't take any grief. You know, you guys, I know what, I know about you guys, and you're good businessmen, you don't need it, you don't want it, that's not why you're there. Somebody's bringing it to you, and stop the people from bringing it to you.
So, if we were to hire, say, on a Friday night, a police officer from eleven to two, and it was slow, and we close at twelve, do we have to still pay for the police officer from eleven to two?
Unfortunately, yes, that's their contract. That's, that's contract. There's a four-hour minimum for that.
Four-hour minimum.
How often do you close at twelve?
Well, on a snowstorm, we'll close, on a slow night, we'll close, or, you know--
Monday night, are you still open at two, or?
Monday, we're not open. It's during football season, and we have a busy place, we stay open--
I think on the weekends, generally, unless you said, there's a snowstorm, or something, you're open, pass, you're open until closing, you know, close early. But, if I, if I could say, I think, just because this, this program, lack of a better term, it worked in the past, so I think it's worth giving it a shot to try it. It's something that worked. It's not something that we're just coming up with. It's worked in a similar establishment. And again, it was, it was short-term, just right after this incident, and--
And then, he instituted a security system.
And that was part of it, and I was going to bring that up. His, he still had his bouncer, for lack of a better term, again, that was easily identifiable. He had a shirt on that said "Security." Instead of just having one of your employees, that, one of the bartenders, that's just going to be a security that night, he's wearing his regular clothes. It's somebody that's identifiable. And, which, you know, that happens in many establishments, you know. You do see that. It's not, it's not out of the ordinary.
Right, right. And I think with all the other steps you're taking, you know, once, once people get the realization that, even if it's only, like you said, only for a month or whatever, that there's a police officer in there, and if you, if they know there's thirty-two cameras in there, you know, who's going to want to be, I mean, unless it's alcohol-fueled, where you don't care to begin with, but hopefully, the tips program will keep people from obviously being overserved. But, if you know you're going to be on candid cameras, so to speak, you know, hopefully, anybody with half a brain wouldn't, you know, wouldn't want to cause any trouble in there.
Through the chair, the cameras that you're talking about, is that in place now?
Yes.
Is it completed?
Yes.
All right, because, because in a sense, that's protection to yourself.
Yeah.
To someone coming in that's staggering, walking up to the bar, sitting down, and then going out, saying that he was served here all night, and you find out in your video, you're showing--
Right.
--him coming in for fifteen minutes, and he's already three sheets to win. So, that's kind of built-in protection for your own business.
So, will, does the board decide how long, or the chief and us decide how long, or do you have a recommendation?
And I don't, because that's, once again, that's their field of expertise, so I think you guys should work together--
Work with the chief.
--as to what you start with, and then go from there. And if it looks like, if it looks like there's no problems, and it looks like, you know, things are going well in there, and you guys can readress the situation, and maybe, you know, back off on whatever you've decided, and then go to your own private people, more, get on a more permanent basis.
Do you want to have them go back in in a month, or--
I was just thinking that, Pete, just come back, let us know, how is it going? How are the cameras working? You know, what is, you know, whoever's going to be there, do you agree, while this was a great idea, or, you know, I guess my guys could wear security shirts and do it from now on? Do you agree that after thirty days, it's a good idea? I mean, we want you to run your own business, your own way, and do it under the proper licenses and rules and regulations, and like you said, having a police officer in there, you know, might seem like it's, it's not so great, but I'm hearing from other establishments that they've done it, and they were happy that they did it. And they're not doing it currently. They solved the situation, and they do it on their own now. And they're here in Isla Meadow.
It's like the town being in receivership. It's like us being in receivership, and it's laughing, like, it's embarrassing.
You can flip that. We care so much about our customers, and so much about our, our image and our success, that we're, we're taking this initiative to have police officers here, because we don't want you to not think about coming here.
And the officers working, if this is implemented, the officers aren't just walking around the bar, watching everybody. There's, there's a presence there. They're not standing there in an orange coat, like, look at me, look at me. It's, they'll be off to the side. I think if you ask your bartenders and your staff, they might like having an officer there, too. I don't know.
You, I mean, you have another facility in the city, and there are two or three to work there?
I'm sorry?
On Wardenton Street?
Two.
How many officers?
Two.
Two. All right. Is there problems down there?
No.
Are the customers, you know--
Safe, feel safe?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do employees feel safe?
Yes. Different clientele, though, chief.
There's no fences up. They come over.
We're a restaurant and lounge in Isla Meadows, and it's a pleasure to come to a business in Isla Meadow. I don't want to say it's in Springfield, but that's what I mean.
Just, just one other question.
I know it there.
To the chair. The cameras, were they in place the night of the incident?
No.
That one? So, that came after?
They were in, are in the works, but Fitzgerald didn't have us on schedule till after.
And who has access to the cameras, if there is an incident? Can we, is there always somebody on staff that has access to the video surveillance?
Act in the office, and whoever's the supervisor, the manager--
Will have access to it.
--of duty has access.
You know, and don't want it to happen, but, we want to, we want to be able to look and see if we can identify who the person is. God forbid something else happens.
And I believe in that regard, when we discussed, of course, this isn't the finalizing, when we have discussed the police officers being agents for the license, you know, for the license commission in effect, if something were to happen, they're able, at that point, to request that the, you know, the tapes, or whatever it is, the DVD from the surveillance, they don't have to wait, you know, because they're, because in theory, once we get this straightened out, they'll be acting as agents for the license commission.
Right.
They can, you know, if something happens anywhere, they'll be able to request the tapes from any cameras, right, as soon as it happens, as soon as they get there, as opposed to waiting for, or being denied, and just for, you know, just to throw that out there for public information. All right. So, you folks should work together and find out what's, you know, what works, and in theory, the only time we'll see you back here is to let us know how great everything's going, and that you don't need them anymore, and that you're, you got your own people and everything in place, and you can move on from there.
So, Chairman?
Suggest that that date be set for April 2nd.
For the next round, Nick, for the shortened, that's fine.
Okay.
Nick, I have a question that's going to come up later on with the board of health stuff, that Mr. St. L has the answer to. Can I ask him at this point, though? Because it has to be asked outside of the hearing.
It's a question?
It's a question about his other restaurant. It's just a term, a term I'll have to use later on.
That's not his restaurant.
I thought it was, okay.
No.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm glad you said that.
Yeah, I didn't know, I thought he was involved.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. Good luck, good luck.
Take a motion for a two-minute recess?
Second.
So, move second, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
And we're back, okay? Our next person is our town accountant, Tom Colianto, with his special guest star from the Appropriations Committee, Russ Denver.
Rockstar.
Not Rockstar. Your hair's not long enough. Although, with the new, with the people at our age, with the Rock singers, none of them have long hair anymore. Well, none of them have hair.
Our age?
Our age. I can still think I'm a couple months younger than you.
You are, at least.
Gentlemen?
Gentlemen?
Gentlemen.
Sorry about the delay. Okay. You're here to discuss a few items.
Yes, we are.
Some fund transfers, and budgets.
Yep. So, every year, about this time of the year, we come to you, give you projections, and try to highlight some of the current concerns we have regarding--
All the budget.
Regarding budgets, and what budgets potentially need reserve fund transfers, or a look at these departments, because we feel maybe the expenditures are going to see what the budget is due to various reasons. And there are, tonight, the Fire Department, elections, veterans, sorry, to discuss about, I don't know how you want to proceed, but I just kind of wanted to go through it quickly--
Yeah, if you want to go through to--
Tell you where we are, what the projections, and what our concerns are.
Exactly.
So, the primary concern is, by law, we can't overspend the budget, so we want to try to bring these to your attention way ahead of time, so that we can take some resolution, and hopefully, I don't know if it's going to be tonight, maybe in the next couple of meetings, get a reserve fund transfer in order to make potential projection whole. For the Fire Department, what we're seeing out of their $666,000 budget that's approved, we're looking at about a $29,916 projected over expenditure. So, that number will be showing up on the bottom line, and I think Deb's got it right there. And, okay. And it's line by line, and a lot of time's been spent, and Fire Chief Paul Morsette's been excellent. You know, he's new, but he's been good at communicating, and we've met many times, and discussed his department with the Appropriations Committee, so they're on board. And the primary problem with them is what we've had in the past is vehicle repairs. That's kind of driving him over. And we have some other projected line items related to overtime. You know, we're never sure where that's going to end up. It depends.
Right.
So, this is a line-by-line item summary of where we believe they were going to be. Secondly, is the Elections Department. And the Elections Department total budget is $21,000, and we believe there's going to be a $27,000 potential over expenditure, primarily due to the fact that we've had eleven elections this year, which is not contemplated when we put the budget together. And we've, again, Tom Florence, Department Head, has been very good. We've gone through, estimated the cost of the elections going forward, and built that into projections, and that's where we see.
And did Tom build in the fact that we decided not to combine the elections in April? I hope, because he was the one who told us not to, so--
When we did this projection, we did not plan on combined.
Okay.
Okay, good, because that's, that we decided not to have it combined.
Okay.
Excuse my nasalness.
Yeah. The next one is veterans. The Veterans Department has a $81,000 budget, and we believe they're going to be $27,000 overspent. I'm rounding the figures. Primary reason here is, we are seeing more benefit, more veterans asking for benefits than we have in the past, maybe due to a number of reasons, primarily because we have John Commerfer on now, and he's--
Outreach is better?
Outreaching a little, we're not sure, you know, but we have about, primarily, there's a detailed analysis that goes with this that we're not showing, but probably about fifteen to twenty beneficiaries now were in the past. We may have had six to eight, so it's really been--
And it's probably going to go up, just judging by the way the world is in life, and how many people we have stationed around the world, and--
We do get 75% reimbursement next year from the state on this, but this is fiscally a problem right now. So, as we move throughout the year, especially in the next month, we're going to bring our projections to you and our concerns. There are a couple other concerns we have, but we don't have finalized projections on them. That is, with the legal budget. And, I think that's it.
Just one other department, we just need additional information from, before we have a firm number for you.
Okay. So, in other words, you know, we can do these transfers next week, if need be, or even the meeting after, because we do have a meeting next week.
We're meeting probably the next three Thursdays in a row, and we want to get on top of them.
You want to finish, yeah, okay.
So, the departments know that they have the funds to be able to expend, because, as you know, we don't want anyone to overexpend certain line items.
So, because we've got, and once we get rid of those, I didn't mean to drop you down, I'm sorry, but once we get, once we iron out those last few problems, we'll be in a position to approve the budgets, and then we can go from there, and then you guys can do what you do, and--
Work your magic. We're going to need a big magic wand this year, so-- We're going to need a big magic wand this year, so.
Okay. All right. Now, how about, okay, so how about the, we're going forward with, you're talking about 13 to 14 budgets or is that all included in here? Are we going to discuss that when we're ready to approve them?
Well, this is just 13's projections.
Yep, I know that.
So 14, I really don't have anything.
Okay.
To add, other than what you've been presented already to contemplate.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That was quick, right?
Yes, we're good.
They're good.
My sinuses, thank you. All right, next item, we have the approval. Is there a motion to approve the open session minutes of January 22nd?
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the executive session minutes of January 22nd, 2013?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay. Next item.
Department budgets, revisions, proof.
Yeah, I believe we're going to do that at the next meeting.
Right, so skip.
What's that? The number nine.
Number nine.
And I know we have a list in here. Number 10 will be the annual town meeting warrants. There's a few warrants already in there and there will be a few before the, a few more before the deadline, which I believe is this Friday? Or the, the, yes. And ours is, what, 15th?
For all other boards right now is March 15th. And then there was a brief discussion I had with council to see if the board was going to adhere to the 15th for itself or adhere to provisions previously adopted, which I can speak with the other board members about and bring it up for the fifth.
Adhere to everyone else's rules.
All right, thank you. All right. Next item is regionalization initiatives. Casino impact. I know both of my fellow select persons have been in discussions and involved in, more involved in the casino impact studies than I have, so I will defer to whoever would like to give us an update.
Thank you. I had a conversation with Mr. Bro today to just re-contact PBPC. And having that discussion, Mr. Bro brought back to me that Mr. Brennan had set that somewhere along March, they would have information for us. There was a letter written today which we'll be sending out regarding that. We're just re-identifying that we are very interested in going forward as quickly as possible with being identified as an impact community. And just letting Mr. Brennan know that we are waiting and sooner, sooner than later, we'd like to hear from them. Also, I've had contact, as I guess you have had a little also, with, I've been contacted by one of the members of the Board of Selectmen in Long Meadow to work with the, the board in Long Meadow to try to do some of this work together so that when the PBPC, PBPC does get their determination or does get to the point where they want to re-contact us and bring us into some discussions, that we're already ahead of the program, ahead of the curve. You know, it being new, it, it just has to be discussed until we all hit on the right points. So as far as my experience goes, that's, that's where we're at. But we are definitely aggressively going after trying to be deemed an impact community.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just add to that, Selectman Punderson did ask me to reach out, send an, and I sent an email to Mr. Brennan at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission today. He responded during the meeting.
Okay.
And the gist of it is that there, the Mass Gaming Commission, he's, if the board would just, I'll give a brief summary here. What, what's happening is from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's perspective is they've been working with two other regional planning agencies in the state to come up with acceptable scope of services for sort of a uniform approach across the state to the different sites, to the different proposals for surrounding impacted communities. They've been working with the communities right now, Pioneer Valley Planning, that is, that are in the running, so to speak, for a casino. And then today, they had a, a round with the other regional planning commissions about getting closer to defining what the scope of services are.
Mm-hmm.
They expect that sometime on the 14th of March is when they will have what they would consider a good approach across the state, which in a conversation that I had had, again, a couple of weeks ago now, he had mentioned that also at the regional, that doesn't mean that the scope of services is going to be the only thing, that there would be some, you know, concept for local, regional, community concern. So in the end, if East Long Meadow is interested in pursuing with, under the guise, the guidance of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, this scope of services developed at the state level will be the sort of uniform guideline. And then the communities that would be working with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission would have opportunity to provide input as to perhaps what they might also want or how to modify, you know, a traffic study here is going to look at, it's going to look at this for them and so forth. So.
Individualized for the communities.
Exactly, exactly.
Which is important because like we identified at the regional meeting, there's three main corridors, Route 5, Route 83, Route 21, that go through three towns, but impact all three towns differently. So we get a general broad guidelines and then customize them to our own needs. That's perfect. Yeah.
What, what Mr. Brennan suggests in the interim is that he's willing to meet with East Long Meadow officials on a one-to-one basis to talk about that work if you would like to do that in the interim meeting between now and mid-March. And then he would also suggest that communities begin to work on the community checklist that has been circulated as a surrounding community, surrounding impacted community checklist. So with that, and again, this is an email that came in during, just, just prior to the meeting, I believe. Would the board want to think about how to approach that and then come up with the direction for the next meeting? Or you want to give some direction as to what you'd like to do? It's only a few days now until the next meeting anyway. I guess one, one, you know, all board members have expressed at one point, they're going to take certain initiatives. So I guess I'm looking for if, if, whether or not the board's going to divide up duties here and if there's going to be one liaison for this or if there's going to be multiple liaisons and for different components of it. Or it just depends on who can make a meeting.
I, I think we should, I think the best opportunity for questions and answers is the face-to-face meeting with Timothy, with Tim Brennan, Mr. Brennan. I, I think that's needed. Whether it's a lone or a group, I think it's a group we go out there, questions and a bigger think tank.
Whatever the board wants to do.
As a group, we either have to have it here at a meeting.
A meeting.
Or we have to post a meeting. So.
So it has to be one person.
And I don't know, I think, I know you've both been talking to people, but I thought you took the point sort of for.
I did, but Mr. Selectman Punderson has initiated some, some conversation too. So if you want to take the reins on that, I have no issues with that. I.
Okay. Then I'll do that.
Okay, great.
Mr. Punderson wants to.
I have had some pretty in-depth conversations with Mr. Brennan already, so it's a pick-up point at least.
Okay. Thank you. All right, our next item is, is we've been talking about a proposal to join forces with Ludlow as to share a human resource person. Obviously, a few years ago, we went to the town meeting and we were turned down as far as getting a hu, a human resource person. But once again, the, the age-old discussion of you've got a 54, 55 million dollar company without a hu, a human resource person, the, the amount we're spending in attorney's fees, no offense, and, and, and also, you know, the, the burden on our, on our employment benefits person, you know, and just in the things you read in the paper and different, different occurrences that have happened, we think that some form of human resource person is invaluable and we're discussing it with, with another town and trying to use the theory of crawling before you walk and getting someone in there and seeing the benefit and then maybe going from there. So I actually am in the process of speaking with, with Ludlow to see what they have in mind and, and so we'll, we'll go from there as far as that goes.
Should you carry that on?
Yes.
Good. Thanks.
Also, the Ludlow and East Long Meadow now are working. With Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Ms. Foxman, to work on that proposal or for doing some kind of a study and see how rapidly that.
Study, if you will, or.
Yes.
Okay.
And I had put on, just if the board had noticed, for a, just a draft warrant article, perhaps for a placeholder for the town meeting.
Yes.
If the study isn't done, just something I'd like the board to think about. That way you'd have it on there. If you don't want it before publication, just take it out or what.
And that, that was a study with the great money, correct?
Yes.
That she described?
Yes, yes.
Free, free study.
Free study.
Free study.
Okay, next item was veteran services, which once again, I sort of took the point on because I was the liaison. I became the liaison to the, to the veterans and I went to the meeting out in Monson with, with the current Eastern Hymen County Veterans Association, I believe that's what it's called basically. And one of the, a couple of, we had a couple questions, concerns with the veterans agent as far as time available here, having a consistent time. I know he's doing a good, good job. Obviously, you can tell by the budget, you know, he's reaching out to more people. But we, we determined that we might want to take a look since Long Meadow decided to pursue a veterans officer. We're, we're in the process and once again, I've sort of taken the lead on this, of pursuing possibly joining forces with Long Meadow, figuring that a veterans service person that deals with two towns might be able to give more time to our town than one that's dealing with, I believe it's five. So.
It would save us some money.
It saves some money.
Right, actually would, yeah. So that's the update on, as far as veteran services. Our next item was public health, Nick. I know we, we know we had talked once again at the regional meeting about regionalizing a public health person and, or using maybe some other town.
If I could just provide an update to the board on this. I've had a conversation with Ms. Foxman again about this and I recall that at the regional boards of selectmen meeting, there was a talk about getting a, a larger amount of money. I can use the wrong figure here, but anyway, the number that came in was significantly less. There was, remember there was a training center idea and so forth?
Yes.
And the grant allocation actually came in significantly less, although still significant. I hesitate to give a number just because I can't remember. What it meant is that the training aspect of it is not feasible and some other communities have dropped, dropped out or have indicated that they may not be as interested. Anyway, she has said that this may provide an opportunity solely now for public health nurse function, regionalization or that type of shared service model and would be interested to know if East Long Meadow would, if it's possible, want to look at that as a sole specific type of function under this grant. So.
Shared.
It would be some kind of a shared public health nurse function. So for, one of the main things that needs to be done is disease surveillance and reporting, TB and the like and case follow-up. And presumably, that would be under this type of an arrangement. If it's possible, I, I would ask that the board to consider that and maybe at the next meeting, give me a direction as to whether or not you would like to be part of that, part of it, since it's now changed.
Okay. Little question. What's our experience with that little group of things? How much, how much of that happens in this town? I mean, is it busy or the reporting and all that type of thing? I mean, is it?
It's.
Is it inconsequential or is it, is there a lot?
Well, it, with the town has been fortunate that the health agent has been able to fill in on that and has been, of course, when, when Mr. Coawal volunteered to take on that duty on a somewhat temporary basis, it was looked at and we had figures going back from the year and it really didn't seem like that much. Well, of course, the next two or three months proved to be like the busiest period it had ever been for whatever reason. But there are certain public health functions, particularly with reporting through an electronic system called Maven, that need to be done, that currently aren't, that are done through voice, you know, discussions with the state and with the, with the follow-up that he's been doing. But there are certain functions that need to be done. So this would be perhaps a way back to it and/or just go right ahead and proceed where the town is going to try and hide, hire that public health function directly. It's been sort of a, a little bit of a, a put-off issue because there have been at times opportunities or discussions about trying to perhaps find a regional solution for it. But I, I would suggest to the board that now is the time to try and make a decision as to whether or not you want to enter into something like that or just go ahead and try and go ahead and hire somebody.
Question for Paul. What's Long Meadow doing? Looking at partnering with them with a veteran service agent? How do they?
They have their own.
I believe they have their own. Do they want to share? I mean, do you want to maybe discuss that?
She does a fabulous job. I forgot her name. I believe they, they discussed, don't they have a, they have a public health person? Unless I'm mistaking it with someone else or something else. And I don't remember, I don't believe I remember her name, but I, I don't know. I haven't had any discussions with them.
Kind of throw that in maybe? Just a little sidebar, you know?
But I think regardless, you know, even if we do that, we, we might want to at least get involved in, in this and, you know, bring it up in the next meeting as far as.
No harm.
Right.
No harm at all.
To let them know we're interested in pursuing more conversation about it.
This would be with the Pioneer Valley Plan and the grant aspect?
Yeah. It doesn't hurt anything. I would, if you're looking for some direction, I mean, you can at least.
See, it, it would seem to me if, if the health inspector could take care of any very specific things that happen and the other reporting and those type of things be a regional, like, regional, regionalized effort, that kind of sounds okay. And you get a chance to give good personal, quick response if the health inspector could still do part of it, rather than wait for the time that is allotted to East Long Meadow for a regional position. So part of that could be done by Fred.
Sure. If you want, Nick, you can go ahead and follow up with Pioneer Valley regarding this. Do we have to take a formal vote?
I'm just looking for some consensus on what to do.
Yep.
Okay, great. The next item is energy management. Nick?
This is a, a carryover item. This was something that the board had talked about in, in the overall concept of wanting to know more about our energy purchases and how we go about doing it and the procedures and so forth. And I put it on here really just to see whether or not this is a, an item that can be closed out. There'd been information that had been provided to the board a couple of meetings back. There hasn't really been a substantive discussion. I think other matters have come up. But there is information to the board about how electricity, gas and oil are purchased. I had had a meeting pretty much within a few days after that particular board of selectmen meeting with Mr. Gramasky, Mr. Fenny and Mr. Kelly and the DPW and they provided information about that. So my question here at this point is whether or not the board wants to consider making a policy or some sort of specific request of the Board of Public Works to at least be notified of energy purchases? Or is this something that the board is more interested in having somebody manage the utility aspect of it where, for example, Mr. Halyer over with Mr. Legu, oversaw the installation of the high school lighting retrofit. I don't know that there needs to be necessarily an action, but the board wanted more information. And this is just a carryover item that I need to know whether or not the board's satisfied at this point or has other direction.
Well, I know we had the issue of, we were looking at one item and DPW was looking at this, you know, a similar item and we're sort of reinventing the wheel, you know. So I, if nothing else, I think it'd be nice if we were notified by, by Public Works if they were, you know, if they were actively pursuing any energy-related matters. So we don't do the same thing, you know.
Don't they buy all our energy?
Yeah.
They, they do all the energy purchase anyway, don't they?
They do.
Yeah, they do all the bidding, buy contracts.
But we, like, we, we were involved, or Dan Halyer was involved in the light, lighting retrofit.
But it's different though.
Yeah, but items like that. Because I, I forgot what the, it's, what the case was where they were looking at something that we had gotten a proposal for someone to come in and.
Well, this came back up as an agenda item going because there had been vendors out there asking for the board of selectmen or a time with the board of selectmen to come in and discuss a proposal for, for providing electricity under net metering.
Right.
At the end of whatever current contract. So whatever our length was, okay, well, we're just making it for that date. And then, so the discussion became, well, how are we managing this and what are we doing? What's the procedure in place now? So.
I, I think we should be well aware of the efforts of the DPW to purchase to secure contracts. I'd like to be a part of, knowing what they're doing, you know, coming from an energy field, it can make or break your bottom line. Doing it correctly or just buying at the wrong time and a lot of evidence with that. As far as the lighting matters and that type of thing goes, Mr. Halyer and Mr. Fenny have done a great job. done a great job in, you know, installing all the retrofits at the schools, and there's other projects that I know I'm bringing to the DPW for other lighting issues. Those, I think, are well left up to the, you know, no, the DPW and, you know, the building inspector, but as far as contracts go, I don't know, I think we should be apprised of what's going on with a major, purchase of the major contracts. My thought.
Sounds good. We don't have to do any formal, right?
There's nothing formal there, just as a response, that there is information in there, and I'd be happy to discuss, to explain what I know from that meeting that I had, with the package of information, how it's, how the purchase process goes and so forth, and so.
Okay, that's something I think we should be aware of, definitely.
Okay. All right, next item is annual town reports, which I've read what has been done so far, and we have a veritable Ernest Hemingway to our left here.
It was a lot, wasn't it?
And it was a tough year, no, it was a tough year to have to write that, and he did, so far, he's doing a fabulous job. Do you mind, I know the Board of Health is finished, I believe, right? Because you're asking the votes.
The chairman of the Board of Health, Select, Patterson, has said that he's satisfied with how it is right now. The Board of Selectmen and Board of Health at various times have taken votes or given consensus that they're okay with the reports. We only have the one this evening, but if the board wanted to take action or not.
Sure, I agree, I'm satisfied with the Board of Health report, so I don't know if that's enough for you to have all of us satisfied?
Yes, we're satisfied.
Just move forward, okay. Next item is the Brown property, and I know Selectmen Baranski has done some legwork on this.
Actually, my legwork will be in thanking and appreciating some, some efforts put forward by Mr. Kingston, and especially Dave Gramasky from the DPW. I asked for some help to get an idea of what some general costs would be, so that we can make that property easily accessible for some of the requests that have been coming out. He did a phenomenal job, he actually requested some information from tie-in bond, they talked about background and existing conditions and potential alternatives. The proposal that he's come up with for some basic water lines, for expanding the driveway so that it was 24 feet across, so that you can have cars going back and forth, one way and the other, as well as a temporary parking area for up to 30 cars, is within the budget that we have already, and we talked about this, we have money allocated for making some improvements to that property. So, I think we can move forward, and, and again, I thank him for the work that he put forward into this, we can go forward with using the money that's already been allocated, we can get the driveway opened up, put the, you know, obviously, we still have to work with the, with the planning board, and make sure we do everything properly.
Excuse me.
But, but we have the means to go forward, and based on the work that he put forward and presented, we have the, the money already put aside to make it happen. So, and I had copies of what he presented to me, sent to you as well.
Read it all.
Now, the only question I have is, obviously, ultimately, the use of this property is going to be determined by the town one way or the other. Are these generic changes, so that if it decide, if it goes in a different direction for some reason, then we won't have to redo these to satisfy the next, the next use?
No, this is very basic, general improvement, so that the current driveway that's there, one car can only pass, they would, they would widen it so that a car can go up and down, which makes it safe. The parking lot is temporary, so it can be removed, and the water, you know, I think that regardless, access to water is going to be necessary, and, you know, if the folks who want to do the garden are successful, then that, that was one of the requests that they had.
Okay.
So.
All righty, was there, I don't know if the police have done a, I know there's a traffic study, if you will, just...
Well, the tie-in bond report says that the speed limit there is 35 miles per hour, and that perhaps reducing the speed limit will help with the safety concern of people coming in and out, and that that would be one way for us to, because otherwise, we're talking about clearing hills and building walls, and that's actually not recommended for a number of reasons, but reducing the speed limit was one of the suggestions that came back in their report, giving people time, and they actually referenced site distance of 215 at an intersection going westerly at 30 miles per hour, you need this much to stop, it was really quite extensive, but that was one of their suggestions as well.
If you'd like, I passed it out to Sergeant Bates.
Okay.
Great.
Get it as well.
Perfect.
Again, it's going to be familiarity of that driveway, for others to be aware that cars are going to be coming.
Right, so some signage, and perhaps, you know, slowing it down in that area as well, and then, and again, widening the driveway a little bit will be helping. So I, I think, I'm very, very excited, very pleased for this to move forward, so.
Yes.
Yes.
Finally.
Yes, I'm very happy.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
And good job to Mr. Gramasky.
Yes, he did some great work.
Getting things going. And what's, what's nice is, it's just, it's temporary, can be changed, it gives access to the place, and there's plenty of place left at the gardens.
We do have, yeah, we do have work to do with the planning board, so this is not...
Right, we can't, we can't vote on this, yeah?
No, so that will be the next step, is to, Mr. Kingston laid out some of his concerns, conservation, there has to be some certification, so that will be the next step.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty, next, Nick, the charter annual franchise fee?
Certification of the board, we'll check in.
Okay.
This is a, just a subscriber-based, so this is not the actual, the larger amount of money that the town receives, but this is a franchise fee.
This isn't what El Catas deals for their budget next year?
Yeah, hopefully not.
Correct.
Okay.
2,400 bucks.
Okay, under new business, unfortunately, we have a resignation letter from Sandra Osborne from the East Long Meadow Housing Partnership Committee. I had the pleasure of being the liaison on that board, and I worked with Mrs. Osborne a couple of times on, on low-income housing transfers, and it was a pleasure working with her, and they're going to miss her on the board. And also, we have a resignation letter from Jody O'Brien from the Conservation Commission, and I don't know, Nick, if you want to post an ad, or, you know, requesting people to volunteer for these positions. I know the, watch, I'll curse myself, but I know the Housing Partnership is, they don't meet very often, the turnover with those houses over on Benton Drive is, I think, I've been here three and a half years, and we've had two, I believe?
One coming up.
And there's one coming up, so. Okay, there's a notification of public hearing from cable regarding programming, equipment, and installation rates, which I believe that hearing's in Boston, isn't it? So anyone who would like to attend, we can get them the information. Request from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission regarding community profile update. It's due in, it's due two weeks from Friday, and the big question is, who's going to fill it out?
Just a question of the board, to see if you have any preferences to who would fill it out, there's a little bit of, I believe, a little bit of subjective comment, commentary in there.
Who's done it, have we ever done this in the past?
Yeah, yes.
Who's done it in the past?
I believe it has been done through the Historical Commission.
Okay.
There you go.
Why reinvent the wheel? Next item is correspondence from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission regarding Community Preservation Act data digest.
Just letting you know that this is available, and there's a link on the letter.
Okay, thank you.
It's in your packet.
Yeah. We have a request from Masonic Temple for a one-day liquor license, beer and wine, Saturday, March 9th, 2013, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Masonic Temple, 43 Chestnut Street, in conjunction with a bridal shower, insurance is on file. Is there a, is there a motion to, to grant a one-day liquor license to the Masonic Temple for that day? Is there a second?
Uh, yeah.
Any, any discussion?
Is this something they do all the time?
Yes.
Okay, so you've got good experience.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So request from East Long Meadow Unico to reschedule the event originally approved for January 8th, 2013, canceled due to a snowstorm, reschedule date Friday, March 1st, 2013. I assume, I assume at that time, everything was in order, you know, okay?
Yes.
Is there a motion to, to allow the Unico Club to reschedule their event?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a request from Chris Graziano, owner of Graziano Gardens, for a, the sixth annual garden party on Saturday, April 6th, 2013, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I'd like, is there a motion to accept the, or to approve the garden party on Saturday, the April 6th?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And also, second, a temper...
Mr. Chairman, just to note for the record, that, that recommendations of the police and fire usually would be followed.
Okay, yes, they were, police and fire had given their recommendations on this, I'm sorry about that. And the second item was a temporary food service permit, which has been approved by the health inspector, is there a motion to grant a temporary food service permit?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's that?
This comes from Inspector Ben Cody, the fire department requires that a fire extinguisher be located in the area of cooking or warming equipment.
Okay.
So I want to note that that has to be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, next item is recommendation from the police...
I think the vote needed to be called.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was the next thing, I'm sorry, I thought that was part of the thing, yeah.
Aye.
Aye. Recommendation from the police department regarding request for traffic signs on Summers Road near intersection with Pinehurst Drive. There's no traffic signs there?
No, it's when people put the directional line, and they'll, for us, some people come in, there's confusion up there because of the driving.
That's true.
Okay.
That is a very tricky area.
So, the residents have asked, and I think they've offered to pay for the signage, their association.
Seems better.
Yeah, no, that...
Is there a motion to approve the request for the traffic sign on Summers Road near, near intersection with Pinehurst Drive?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
We're taking turns, I see, aye.
Very good. And last, well, not last, we have a notification from the library director regarding a position vacancy in the children's librarian full-time. Are they posting that, or are they?
They are posting it, and this is due to the retirement of Cindy McNod.
Saw her today. All right, Board of Health.
Okay, old business, I don't have any on here.
We've got, we've got the...
ACO budget.
Oh, the ACO budget.
But we're...
Let's, let's not do that right now.
Okay, we'll deal with that with the rest of the budgets.
Deal with the rest of the budgets. I, just with one regard to that, or one comment, I believe the car was registered today, or yesterday, Nick? Was it today?
He was, he was able to get the plates, and he went down with the chief to MHQ and brought that.
So, are we on the road?
Pass inspection?
Okay, we're on the road, the lights...
Does the horn bark?
I do have a couple, I do have a couple additions here.
Fire hydrants?
We had discussion about removing the lights, obviously, which have been removed correctly. We want to install a, a yellow, an amber light in the back, and one's one in the front. We don't have any funds to do that right now, so that's going to be tabled and put off, if you want, until, and also, was it, were the signs removed off it, were the decals removed off of it?
I do not know, I did not see it, I know he took the plates, I dropped them down here today, because we picked up the new cruiser as well.
Okay.
I just, I don't want the perception that it's a police car.
Yeah, and we don't want it either.
And someone feel that it's a police officer. It has municipal plates on it, I'll see above, removing it, but you're still going to see through it, even when it's off, because the shadow effect is still there.
You can get those magnetic signs.
Right. What he has is, he has strobe lights around in the taillight of the car, so if he does stop, abruptly in the road, and he's doing something, there should be a toggle switch that will activate the strobes.
Okay, that's one of his main concerns.
So give him a little more safety per se.
Okay, but we, we don't have any funds right now for the re-signing of the car, we don't have any funds right now for putting in the strobe that seems to be needed for his safety, so that's going to be a project later on, wondering if we get some funds available to us.
Okay.
Okay? So I guess that was old business, excuse me. New business, I have a letter from the East Long Meadow Planning Board, from Chair Mr. Kingston regarding some windows over at Bentley's Bistro. They're called...
Nano windows.
Yeah, nano windows, which our chairman has graciously explained to me what they are. Mr. Kingston, or the, the planning board had a question as to whether that would be good for food service, the matter was given to our Board of Health Inspector, Mr. Coawall. Mr. Coawall has sent a letter saying he had a lengthy discussion with Mr. Vincent Santinell, owner of Bentley's, who was requesting use of nano windows, and our Board of Health Agent has said that these windows have been used many times on the restaurants, and agreed that they would be allowed to be used, if the problem gets, you know, comes up, then we'll deal with the problem as it comes, as it presents itself. Well, Paul said these are windows that open up one area to the other, your patio dining going into your regular dining area, which is basically what they want to do there, so that's been taken care of, excuse me.
There is a question here.
Yes.
I guess for town council, is that, since it's been approved, is that something that...
I, I don't think that the board necessarily needs to, but if the board had been thinking in terms of, you know, whether or not this was an, you know, something of an alteration, or it's not changing necessarily the seating.
No, it's not really changing anything, except just the breeze.
The breeze.
Yeah. Okay.
Next item, I believe we're in the licensing groups, can I, hang on a second here. There is a, there is a competed?
Oh, the complete, it should be...
Completed, okay.
Yeah.
The Licensing and Rabies Clinic at AW Browns on March 23rd, at 144 Shaker Road.
Is it March 23rd?
March 3rd.
Looking down below, it says March 23rd.
March 23rd.
I was looking at our...
Sorry.
That's what it says here on my computer.
Yeah.
That, that is a typo.
Okay.
Okay, so March 23rd, thank you. At Browns, 144 Shaker Road, it's from 10:00 a.m. till noon, there's $12 charge for rabies, one year's rabies vaccine, and vaccination, I guess, and they're also discussing a period of amnesty for licensing your dog. If, current fees are $10 for a spayed dog, and improved at $20, if not, late fees are $25 for each year prior to your dog is not licensed, plus current licensing fees, and so they're offering an amnesty program regarding delinquent licensing for dogs that are in the clear hours on March 23rd, so if anybody listening to this wants to come in and have their dog registered that's been around for 15 years, then it's going to cost you once rather than 60. Let's see, what else is there? Wind River Environmental LLC has made application to the Board of Health to be approved for water, pump trucks for, what do they use them for?
Septic.
Just for the septic, okay. I thought we had our own pump truck.
No, this is private entity looking for permission to operate in the town.
Just operate in the town, okay, to pump out septic, okay, all right.
So this will require a vote of the board.
Everything here that I can see is in, is in...
Been approved by the health inspector.
Yeah, Fred approved it.
Complaint, so Fred approved it, so that's, that's happened.
Well, we have to make...
Do you ask for a motion?
We have to vote on that, right?
Yes.
Well, Fred approved this, Water Solutions Group, Don O'Connell, Main Street, if he's approved it, then...
You have to ask, or do I have to?
You do, because you're the chairman. I asked for a motion then to approve Wind River Environmental LLC, 577 Main Street, Hudson, Mass., to use their pump trucks in town.
Second.
Place of disposal is Water Solutions Group.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor wrote by standing, aye. As opposed, you know, opposition, it passes.
I'm used to him saying, he kept me out of order here, I apologize for that.
That's all that I have. Anything else to, no?
All right, and a correspondence, we have a letter from Cable Television Division regarding license expiration notice, expires February 2nd, 2016. Is there anything we have to...
My question is whether or not you want me to go ahead and, go ahead and call for a cable advisory committee meeting?
Oh, wait a second here, it's probably a good idea.
Yep.
No, I think, I think we're done, we're fine.
That's, that's tabled, that's done, thank you.
Yeah.
I missed this.
Item 31 is tabled.
Tabled, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry about that.
It's okay. So it's probably a good idea. Give us a three-year lead, lead time?
There's, yeah, there's a few questions that the Cable Advisory Committee needs to go over, whether or not they want to pursue, the town would want to pursue the formal or informal procedures. The town has pursued the informal the last couple of times, and it has seemed to work out, and there is call for public input, so there will be, you know, ascertainment or at least public hearings about certain aspects of the cable process. So the question for the board tonight is, do you want me to work with Donna and get the Cable Advisory Committee going?
Yes. Okay. Before we get to, we'll finish with the Town Council, so quickly go through meetings, invitations, and reminders. We have a local emergency planning committee meeting Wednesday, February 27th, 2013, 7:00 p.m. at the Fire Department, 150 Summers Road. Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, March 5th, 2013, 6:00 p.m. Town Hall Hearing Room. Isla Meadow Medical Reserve Corps Potluck Meet and Greet Monday, March 11th, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. 50 Devonshire Terrace at the home of Carleen Hoffman, MRC Unit Coordinator. The Mass Municipal Association, 2013 Local Government Legislative Breakfast in Cities and Towns, Friday, March 15th, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the Westfield Athenaeum, 6 Elm Street, Westfield. Medical Reserve Corps Train-a-thon, Saturday, March 16th, 2013, at the Gardens at Wilberham Lodge, Great Room, 2301 Boston Road, Wilberham. Now, we can have our esteemed barrister come up.
Speech.
When was the last time you've got applause when you gave? Or in this case, it'd be a plow, because there was only one. Okay, there you go. I think two people make a golf applause. If you have two people, it's golf applause. How are you? All right, so we have to identify which is executive and which is first.
First, four items on my agenda would be executive session, dealing with collective bargaining issues and collective bargaining contract itself.
Okay.
Non-union employee contract negotiations, and employees' right to privacy under Chapter 214, Section 1B.
Okay.
I would suggest that that language be used as the motion, just refer to that language you're moving to executive session.
So we have to do 37?
We do, I'm just saying, just refer to that explanation rather than have to repeat it all when you go back to the executive session. 37 is a suggestion that I had made to the board some time ago, actually, to the executive secretary, Town Administrator, actually. Given all the consternation and confusion and legal issues that have been going on in the community since August of last year, and the membership of the board and the makeup and with members leaving at different times, it would have been my recommendation that the board, the new board once constituted, consider moving to ratify and confirm the actions taken by the Board of Selectmen for the period from approximately August 1 through the election of the new members.
Actually, not that it's ingrained in my mind, but it would be August 8th.
Your memory is much better than mine.
Oh, believe me, this is a year that...
A little impact?
Yes.
And the purpose is just to confirm, so if there's ever any issue with respect to the appropriateness of any of the votes that were taken, there's a clear record that they've been confirmed.
Now, is this something I should not take part in, or since...
No, you would participate.
Okay, I just didn't know, because that's part of the original process, if, okay.
I was just confirming the vote taken by the board, the boards that you remember.
It's going to be a motion to accept the previous minutes, which were in our dropbox.
Well, yeah, but these would be the previous, what would we, a motion to accept the previous actions of the board?
It would be a motion, a motion that the board vote to ratify and confirm the actions voted and approved by the Board of Selectmen from August, the town of Isla Meadow, from August 8, 2012, through...
December 8, 17th, or whatever you have.
December 20...
18th.
6th, or...
18th.
28th?
18th.
18th, 2012.
Okay.